Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's time to start our, our commission meeting. Um, so if we can call the meeting's order. City Clerk?
Commissioner Castillo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Good?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Seifel?
I'm here, but I can barely hear you, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Seifel?
Thank you, much better.
Mayor Orden?
Yes.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Corin?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Marcos Cala? Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we just had a tragedy in our city. And I wanted to see if we could take a moment of silence for a young student who was killed, Maya Marcano. Uh, she is a graduate of Flanagan High and went on to college. And she now is no longer with us. So if we could just bow our heads and take a moment of silence for Maya. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we just had a tragedy in our city. And I wanted to see if we could take a moment of silence for a young student who was killed, Maya Marcano. Uh, she was a graduate of Flanagan High and went on to college. And she now is no longer with us. So if we could just bow our heads and take a moment of silence for Maya. Thank you all.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we go forward, could I, um, just have a moment, um, also, uh, just to remind everybody, I know you all see it out there everywhere, but how important it is, uh, that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and that, you know, for those, for those that are battling, for those that have won, and for those that we unfortunately lost and for their families, we always want to keep them in our minds and in our hearts. Um, cancer, uh, is a horrible, horrible disease. Um, there have been some very fortunate folks that have survived many years, um, with a good quality of life, which is so important. And, um, um, there are those that thank God, we have such fabulous hospitals, doctors, nurses, caregivers, um, you know, in our communities that almost dedicate their entire life to, to that type of work, um, which is very heart wrenching work. Um, and so we want to, we want to thank them as well for, for what they do for, for all of us. But clearly, um, clearly please remember those that we, that we have lost. Um, and that we at some day will not ever have to say that we have lost anymore, that, that we have fi- have finally found a way to defeat, to defeat this horrible, um, disease that knows absolutely no boundaries. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so you normally would think that it's a woman's or a female disease, but you men out there, it is just as bad a disease for you all. You may not have the high numbers that we do, women do, but it is still something and you need to make sure that you're aware of that when you have your, your annual physicals as well, that, that, you know, you speak to your doctors and all about that. So Mayor, if, if we could, just a moment to, um, again, thank those that, um, have dedicated and done so much, appreciate those that are still here with us, and certainly remember and respect those that are, um, that are no longer with us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, uh, I have a presentation now for the victim's advocate. If you would come forward. Normally I would come down with you, but because of what we're doing, I'm, I have to stay a little distant. Good evening. You can go ahead and push that, you got it all set. I know you do. All right, this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas in just one day, across the U.S. and its territories, nearly seventy-five thousand victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than nine thousand requests for services, including emergency shelters, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation could not be provided because programs lack the resources to meet victim, victims' needs. And whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in the community, throughout the United States and the world. And whereas racism, homophobia, transphobia, ageism, and discrimination based on physical ability, nationality, or other factors help perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for some victims. And whereas the need for safe houses continues to be rated as Survivor's most urgent need. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines joins with others across Florida and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in the city of Pembroke Pines. And whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each whose number one thing adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming our communities. Now therefore, I, Frank Seawright, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, to hereby proclaim October tw- two thousand twenty-one as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Pembroke Pines. And if I could present this to you. And you could just, whoever wants to speak, whoever, or you just go ahead. Just have to introduce yourself.
Okay. Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, City Manager, Mr. Corin and Ms. Graham. My name is Alicia Hendricks, I'm a victim advocate here with the Pembroke Pines Police Department. To my left is Teresa Sullivan, another victim advocate with Pines. To my right is Angela, who is a member of our, one of our community agencies, Women in Distress, as well as Anya Torres and Catherine Levano, who are both victim advocates with Pines. Um, we appreciate greatly the ability to have this proclamation. And you may notice we're a little bit bigger than we've been in previous years. And we want to take this chance to thank the commission and city staff for approving the idea that was established by our command for allowing us to have an additional full-time member in our unit this year.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
My name is Angela Di Pasquale. Um, I'm blessed that this is my third opportunity to come. Um, I am one of the children and family therapists at Women in Distress. On behalf of Women in Distress and the domestic violence victims we serve, we would like to thank you and the city of Pembroke Pines for your ongoing support of our programs and commitment to bringing awareness to this issue. We also would like to especially thank City Commissioner Angelo Castillo for his years of support as a board member for Women in Distress. In the last physical year, despite COVID, Women in Distress has been able to continue to serve over two hundred residents of Pembroke Pines through our twenty-four-seven crisis hotline, our region emergency filter programs. Through supportive services like therapy and advocacy, Pembroke Pines residents have received over three hundred and fifty hours of therapy and over two hundred hours of advocacy. Most importantly, Women in Distress has been able to provide three hundred and twenty bed nights to survivors of domestic violence who are residents of Pembroke Pines. At the heart of our mission, Women in Distress takes pride in collaborating with communities like the city of Pembroke Pines to help stop domestic violence abuse for everyone through intervention, education, and advocacy, by providing free services to all victims of abuse and their children. And through the support of Pembroke Pines, we work every day to strive towards accomplishing that mission. Thank you so much for your ongoing support.
Thank you. Teresa?
Have to take a deep breath. And I'm, I think I'm far enough away and fully vaccinated and I can't talk through the mask very well. Um, I would like to take this moment to mention a couple of things, Mayor, City Manager, Vice Mayor, the Commission, each and every one of you, that thanks I don't think is ever redundant. And I would like to thank you personally for allowing our unit to expand by hiring our newest full-time victim advocate, Anya. She's been with us in a grand position for almost two years and you all on our command determined that it was time to expand the unit more, and I just can't thank you enough. The other thing I'd like to thank you for, hope I can get through this, um, is I would like to thank each and every one of you, very personally, for the support that you have given our unit since I started, one person part-time, twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five on call, and look at what you're looking at now. I just, I thank God and City Pembroke Pines every single day that I have worked for the city. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve in this capacity for twenty-five plus years. And I just really want to thank everybody.
Thank you. Our newest?
Good evening. My name is Catherine Levan, I'm also victim advocate, as Alicia stated before. Um, I just wanted to thank you guys because domestic violence isn't just a family problem, it's a village problem. And to know that the city of Pembroke Pines is our village and we have such astounding support from the city as well as command staff, as well as our officers, just makes our job a lot easier to say, hey, listen, I know it's difficult to leave, but you know what, now is the time to leave because there's people behind you, the city supports you. And a lot of times our victims always say, I'm scared because the monster that I know, I know it, but the monster that I don't, I don't. But now we have not only more, you know, services, we have a great agency that supports us, but we got a city, we got a village that we can say, city of Pembroke Pines backs you up, you're not alone. So just thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Mayor? Hold on.
Hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I recognize you.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I just wanted to say something. Uh, Chief, did you want to say a couple words first? Okay.
She's big on social media.
Let me just say how proud I am as mayor of this great city to have you all work with us. I have, as you know, called you personally for different people that were having different problems. You not only came right away, you followed it through. So that makes us all look like we're really trying to help our residents, which we are. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Commissioner Seifel?
Yes, Mayor, I, I just wanted to follow up with Teresa. Twenty-five years, amazing, amazing. And you have been a mentor to many, you have been the leader out there for many. And through your hard work, your dedication, and your internal compass that puts you always in that right direction, you have been able to share that with, with these young ladies. And, and, and so what we can say to you is thank you for helping develop this unit that we have, that we are so very, very proud of. And thank you for twenty-five years, plus twenty-five more. Please stay with us, thank you.
Commissioner?
I forgot to say one thing.
Go ahead.
Like Mayor said, I've worked with, we've worked with many of you one-on-one individually over the years and all the people that came before you. If you're ever traveling through Hampstead, North Carolina, I would love, that's where I own a home that I'm moving to, I would love to have you visit, we could at least catch lunch or something, and if you need an address, phone number, et cetera, it's in the office.
Got it. Uh, who's that? Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, thank you very much. Teresa, I just want to thank you personally. Uh, during, during, during the years that I've known you, you have been consistently caring about people in, in the community who really needed help and didn't know who to turn to. And that's what you all do. Uh, people who are in a terrible, terrible situation and you form a bridge from them to leave the place, that horrible place where they were, to places where they could get help. And, uh, and, and, and the, and the sad thing is that there are so few people in the city of Pembroke Pines that even know that we do this. They are the victim advocates. So when you're victimized by a crime or something terrible, they are there. And it's not just, it's, I mean, the, the domestic violence issue is horrible, but it's not just that. It, it, it's any crime. If you need some sort of assistance getting past it, they're there to help you. And they do a great job. And the proof isn't what we say, the proof is what the people who you do business with say. They call us all the time and say, I just, I, I can't thank you enough, uh, for that. And, uh, and it just warms my heart. You've done great work and you've got more, you've got many more miles to go. And I'm so very proud to say that you're my friend. So congratulations and, uh, and, and good luck to all of you, because you got, uh, big shoes to fill. Commissioner Schwartz?
I also neglected to say that I'm very, very proud of the legacy I'm leaving, that the mantle is on their shoulders to carry it on, and I know that they will.
I, I absolutely. Thank you. Uh, Teresa? You have made our community better.
I hope so, thank you.
You have, you have led the way on how cities should support their community. And I want you to enjoy, you, I, I, I talk to the chief all the time and Chief Justino, I'm like, how do you guys even sleep? And then I think about the victim advocates units, and you guys don't. Um, the amount of human pain that you deal with every single day, and to be able to, um, live your life without being consumed, uh, by, by, by your work, it's just absolutely outst- uh, it's outstanding. Um, so I want you to enjoy North Carolina, okay? Because you have a team that you're leaving behind, who's not going to let you down. Now, I say this because, uh, a unit like yours wasn't available when I was three years old, when my mother was beaten, when my mother lost her hearing as a result of that, at the hands of my father. So for well over forty-five years of my life, um, it's been about making sure that women are not abused, that you don't raise your hand to your child, and that you respect your spouse, and violence of any kind isn't warranted in society. I get what you do and echo what's what my colleagues have said, every single day you go to work thinking about somebody else other than yourself. And that is the pinnacle of public service. So thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Vice Mayor Good.
I would like to say something really quick. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, I, I'll brief brief so you can speak. So I, I, I just want to say, uh, really, respect for the strength and the service that you provide to this community, ladies. Thank you very much. And to Ms. Teresa, uh, you've raised the bar for part-time, twenty-four-seven, three fifty-two. Uh, I am going to use you as the poster child of what part-time people should be doing. So thank you very much. And good luck with your future.
Sorry. My name is Anya, again, um, as they said earlier, I apologize for interrupting. This is my first time in this room. Alicia and Teresa, it's because of COVID, thank you. Teresa and Alicia have already, thank you for everything, the new position, like, it's me, thank you. I've been with the agency for a couple of years. Um, and five years ago, if you would have asked me if I'd be working at a police department in Pembroke Pines, I would have been like, no way! Like, I never thought of it. And I, I just, I'm very happy here, um, I am. And Commissioner Schwartz, thank you for sharing your story and listening to the numbers that Angela just shared from Women in Distress of, from our community right here, the numbers, and those are things that we've done, and obviously we've all done together. So listening to those numbers was very eye-opening for me, but like I said, thank you for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. And thank you for everything you guys do for our unit, city, et cetera. So, thank you. Thank you. Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, it's a girl like shirt, got it, beautiful.
I got you. You can be in here too.
That's still without a mask? Yes, no, see?
Teach, teach them how to picture high. Yeah, you gotta, you gotta go high and down.
Thank you.
You are, but thank you so much.
Again, thank you so much for the time.
Good luck.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good evening. And now we have a presentation about Florida Atlantic University on a redistricting plan. Can you come up towards me? How are you?
Good evening.
Is that time already? Is it that time already, redistricting?
How are you?
Good.
Good. Very happy to be here, thank you for having me. Can I take my mask off?
Whatever you like.
Might be that, give me a little bit of time. Uh, my name is Jamie Dampf, and I'm a senior instructor at Florida Atlantic University.
Yeah, at the Geo Sciences Department. Um, I'm here this evening to present the, uh, results of a analysis that we've done for you, specifically looking at your redistricting alternatives. Uh, I'm, uh, as a part of a team that includes also Dr. Schultz, also with the Department of Geosciences, and also Dr. Barasa, who's with the Department of Odeon Planning. And together we worked on this, uh, this analysis for you. Um, as you all know, doubt aware, the city charter calls on, um, the city to, every ten years, conduct an analysis like this to find out whether or not the, uh, districts of the city are still in balance. And if they're not in balance, then you, uh, you engage in an analysis where we present you some alternatives and then you can potentially choose from those. Of course, this is consistent with the nineteen sixty-five Voting Rights Act and its various amendments. The data that we've used for this project is primarily the U.S. Census twenty-twenty registering data. Uh, and specifically, we are using the, uh, census blocks, which is the smallest spatial unit that the census uses to enumerate the, uh, population of the United States. And this allows us to map with the finest spatial resolution, uh, your districts. And of course, it's data like this that's required for municipal redistricting. The other set of data that we use for our analysis is data that was presented to us by your staff, by the city, and that's housing data. And specifically, this housing data was used to create a population projection of what the city's districts would look like by January of twenty-twenty-three. So it's taking into consideration, um, projects, development projects that you currently have in the works and are expected to have been completed and occupied by January of twenty-twenty-three. So there are three primary, uh, redistricting parameters that we work on, that we consider when we're going through this type of analysis. The first, as I alluded to before, is reasonable population equality across the districts. And specifically, using a standard, uh, threshold where the deviation amongst those districts should not exceed ten percent. The second criteria that we strive for is to maintain geographic continuity and compactness. So we work to make sure that your districts is nice and tight as they possibly can and don't have any weird offshoots and shapes going on. Uh, and so, uh, as we're drawing those districts, we try to make sure that we're following major natural and man-made boundaries, were it all possible. And the third criteria is political in nature. So specifically, uh, we're seeking to respect the integrity of various communities of interest. So population equality really is the primary driver in this analysis, and the other, uh, criteria are significant in guiding our decisions towards achieving reasonable population balance. So of course, we begin by, um, analyzing what the current situation is. And so you see on the screen here, a map of your existing districts as they're configured at the moment. And so we need to analyze these districts with the twenty-twenty, uh, census data in mind. And looking at that data, the twenty-twenty census tells us that the population of Pembroke Pines is presently one hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight, with an average population of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five. The largest city is, excuse me, the largest district is District One, and that's at forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four people. And specifically, that means it has a deviation that's four point five eight percent above the theoretical average of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five. The smallest, uh, district, on the other hand, is District Two, at forty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-three people. That's three point two percent below the theoretical average in terms of its deviation. So what we found is that while the current districts are not heavily unbalanced, the existing deviation is sufficient to warrant redistricting. Specifically, the total deviation within the city is ten point eight one percent between all four of the districts. And of course, this exceeds that ten percent, uh, max threshold that we, uh, previously described. And as I also alluded to previously, we were, uh, directed to also take into consideration the future growth, the future near growth of the city, uh, using the data that was provided us, to us by staff, using this housing data, we have calculated a population projection, again, up until January twenty-twenty-three, where the population of the city is expected to grow by one thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine people to a total of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and forty-seven. Eleven hundred and nine people of that thirteen hundred and sixty-nine people are going to be located in District Four specifically. So the new average population is going to be forty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven come January of twenty-twenty-three. This growth is going to serve to further push the city's districts out of balance. So the total deviation will rise, it's going to rise to twelve point six nine percent. So if you're considering this future growth, this reaffirms the notion that you need to engage in some redistricting. To reduce this population imbalance, uh, the boundaries of Districts One and Four would need to contract, uh, in favor of Districts Two and Three. So the boundaries are contracting, so we give people over to Districts Two and Three, and thereby restoring population balance. So, uh, we have prepared for you three alternatives. All of those alternatives meet standard, uh, districting guidelines and the requirements of the city charter, and they're alternative ways to better balance the district populations. And of course, they also keep with the intent of the other identified guidelines. Now, of course, that's not to say that these three are the be-all and end-all, they could be the only three ways that you could calm up the city, you know, there's, there's always going to be different ways to approach that. But it is true that you have a city that's with very regular commission districts that split into relatively, uh, even four quarters. And so it, it does make it a little bit more, um, challenging to, to, uh, re-align those districts without doing anything revolutionary. Uh, we were also directed to provide with you side-by-side analysis of both present and future population. And so this effectively amounts to six permutations. We have three alternatives where between Alternative One and Alternative Two and Alternative Three, the geographic boundaries are going to change, but we're also presenting, uh, with those alternatives, two sets of tables, one table for twenty-twenty and one table for twenty-twenty-three. So that gives us six permutations. We, uh, have referenced those tables as version one point one and one point two, two point one and two point two, three point one and three point two. Good. So let's talk about our first alternative that, uh, we present for your, uh, possible consideration. This alternative is, uh, a minimalist approach. So what we're saying is we're trying to, uh, mess with your boundaries to the least degree that we possibly can while achieving population balance. So the focus of this alternative is purely empirical, purely on the numbers, how do we achieve population balance? We did this by moving territory from Districts One and Four into Districts Two and Three. Of the three alternatives presented, this has the smaller Johnson Street and Pines Boulevard in the north-south direction. Of course, this is taken from District Four. District Three is presently, using the twenty twenty data, twelve hundred and eighty-three people below average, and, uh, is going to gain seventeen hundred and sixty-five people under this swap. District Four will be eleven hundred and nineteen people above average in twenty twenty-three, and it's with that future growth in mind that we specifically incorporated, uh, this change. Uh, if we were only considering twenty twenty growth, we probably wouldn't not, would not have made, uh, this switch. Good. It's also worth noting here, while we have this particular map up, uh, that this change is also included in the second alternative that we'll be talking about in a moment. The other change that we see in Alternative, uh, One was the, uh, eastern change, and so in this case, we're seeing the northerly jog in the border between Districts One and Two being shifted to the east from Douglas Road to University Drive. Of course, this means that this territory is being taken from District One, which is the largest and least balanced of the existing districts, with nineteen hundred and fifty-nine more people than average at the moment. District Two, of course, is thirteen hundred and seventy-two people below average, and so it needs to gain people, and this swap granted an addition, an additional seventeen hundred and fifty-eight people. This change is central to all of our alternatives, right? We cannot achieve population balance without this particular change, so again, it's, it's a normal. So we find that the overall deviation is much improved under Alternative One. It falls from ten point eight one percent to six point six percent, with an average of just one point six five. Even then, this, uh, deviation is, seems a little bit higher than it might otherwise be, and that's because the boundaries of District Four in this alternative are being drawn to consider this future population growth that it's anticipating. And so if we look to the future, you'd expect that number to, to drop, and I think we'll see that in just, just a moment. So here we see, exactly as predicted, Districts Four deviation does improve from minus three point three percent to minus one point five percent as we account for this twenty twenty-three population growth. The total deviation is now just three point six five percent, with an average of point nine one percent. It's worth noting at this particular time that of all the six permutations we're going to present to you this evening, this has the, uh, greatest balance of all the alternatives that, that we offer you. Good. Okay, so if Alternative One was trying to improve the population balance specifically, exclusively, almost exclusively, uh, Alternative Two focuses on the second criteria that we work with, which is geographic compactness. So we're still working within the confines of population balance, but our focus here is to make, if possible, the districts more compact. And so we do that by building off the changes that we see, saw in Alternative One. So both that eastern and western boundary change we saw in Alternative One, those are still incorporated in this alternative, but we add two more changes. And we add these changes with the specific goal of making the border between Districts Two and Three as straight as possible. Good. And so again, we see a map that, uh, shows the differences between the existing districts and what your districts would look like if you were to choose Alternative Two. And again, the eastern and western boundaries are still shown there, but the new changes are right in the middle there on Flamingo Road, to the east and west of Flamingo Road. And here we see what this map would look like if you were to adopt this particular alternative without the, uh, changed geographic areas being highlighted by the red hatching. So specifically, what we're doing here is, uh, the boundary, the southeastern boundary of District Three is being squared off to follow the major surface. So the southern border now continues along Pines Boulevard all the way to Flamingo Road, and then up Flamingo Road as far north as Johnson Street to form its new eastern, uh, eastern boundary. Of course, this territory is taken from District Two. Uh, this does mean that CB Smith Park is now no longer split between, uh, two different districts, but is now in the single district, District Three. And as part of this change, three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine residents are moved from District Two to District Three. And again, allow me to note that this change is also included in Alternative Three as we move forward. So if we were to achieve optimal compactness, uh, in an ideal scenario, that part of District Three that is presently protruding east of Flamingo Road, north of Johnson Street and south of Tap Street, uh, would be a direct swap. Uh, however, that's not possible because there are too many people in this particular geographic area, six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five, to be exact. Uh, and so what we have to do then, in this scenario, is take the neighborhoods that are on the eastern side of this geographic area, those neighborhoods that are presently contiguous with, uh, District Two. And so specifically, Pier Point East, Colony Point, Villa Lakes, Gardens at Pembroke Lakes, and Pembroke Lakes are all moved into District Two in this particular, uh, swap of land. And, uh, the waterways become the natural border, well, actually, there's man-made lakes, so, you know, man-made border, an obvious border between, uh, Districts Two and District Three under the scenario, and specifically, we're moving three thousand, two hundred and thirty, uh, people into District Two. Remember, of course, we need to gain population in District Two. So the overall deviation is still improved over the existing districts if we're only looking at the, uh, twenty twenty data. So the deviation is falling from ten point eight one percent to eight point zero six percent, with an average deviation of two point zero two. Again, though, this is with a District Four boundary that's specifically been drawn for this future growth, so we would expect that these numbers would grow once we work out to the twenty twenty-three data, and of course, it does. So under that scenario, the total deviation falls to five point four eight percent, with an average of one point three seven. So Alternative Two achieves what it's set out to do. It, it both improves the compactness of the city commission districts, and it offers, uh, good population balance both now and into the near future. Finally, and you'll all be very thankful for that, right? Finally, finally, we move on to Alternative Three. Uh, Alternative Three, um, takes into consideration the third, uh, criteria on our list. Um, if Alternative Two addressed both the compactness and population balance issues, uh, it does have the issue that it moves the condominium community of Colony Point out of District Three and into District Two. Presently, each of the four districts includes one of the four major condominium communities. Hollybrook is in District One, Park Place is in District Two, Colony Point is in District Three, and Century Village is in District Four. So if we want to maintain, uh, this status, uh, Alternative Three builds up of Alternative Two and returns Colony Point and its eight hundred and ninety-nine residents to District Three. This creates an imbalance, however. So addressing this requires that District Three give up population elsewhere, and we've achieved that by restoring the boundaries of District Four to their current configuration. So, again, one more time, we see the change from the existing boundaries to what your, uh, your commission districts would look like if you were to adopt Alternative Three, with the specific geographic boundaries being highlighted by the red hatching. And here we see what those commission district boundaries would look like, uh, without those boundary changes being highlighted by the red hatching. So this is Alternative Three. So to make this work, um, we, again, we go back to that area of District Three that's protruding, uh, east of Flamingo, and as an alternative to the eastern neighborhood, those that are contiguous with District Two, uh, north of Johnson and south of Tap Street, are moved from District Three to District Two, specifically Pier Point East, Villa Lakes, Gardens at Pembroke Lakes, and Pembroke Lakes. However, in this particular alternative, Colony Point is retained by District Three. We should also note that for the sake of compactness, and so you don't get this weird funky shape sticking out, this little appendage sticking out of, uh, District Three, we've moved, uh, the Pembroke Pines Mall, uh, into District, uh, Three in this scenario, and of course, the mall doesn't have any residents, so it doesn't, uh, upset our numbers in terms of population balance. So this results in a movement of two thousand, three hundred and thirty-one people into District Two. Now, to account for the removal of Colony Point and its eight hundred and ninety-nine residents from, you know, what we saw in Alternative Two, we have to offset that by not, again, this is what we're not doing, we're not moving the area, uh, between northwest two hundred and eighth and US twenty-seven in the east direction, east-west direction, and Johnson Street and Pines Boulevard in the north-south direction, as we saw in the first two alternatives. So this area is excluded from that, we're going back to the status quo, we're going back to the District Four boundaries being completely unchanged. So looking at the twenty twenty data, the overall deviation is improved under Alternative Three. Five point six six percent is our new total deviation, with an average of one point four two percent, and with District Four no longer being drawn to accommodate future growth, uh, the overall deviation is much improved when we're looking at the twenty twenty data. Projecting out to twenty twenty-three, then, you might expect to see a slight raise in deviation, and indeed, we do, uh, the total deviation becomes six point six five percent, with an average of one point six six. The population balance and compactness are achieved under this scenario, but we're also maintaining the relationship between the condominiums and their existing districts. So to summarize, all three of the alternatives, uh, that we are presenting this evening serve to re-establish population balance among the four districts, both today and into the near future. Alternative One was a minimalist approach that focuses on improving overall population balance. Alternative Two focused on improving geographic compactness within the constraints of maintaining reasonable population balance between the districts. And finally, Alternative Three seeks to consider all three of the redistricting criteria, population balance, compactness, and the political considerations given to maintaining the integrity of communities. And with that, uh, I will finish my presentation. Thank you very much, I'll be very happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, thank you for a well-presented, um, idea about our population and what we have to for redistricting. Are there any questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the, for the presentation. Um, have we spoken before?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I wanted to ensure that the process, uh, wasn't, uh, uh, wasn't hindered or hampered or, or, or any changes. Did anyone else from this commission speak to?
Not at all.
Any members of your team?
Good.
No.
The only person I've had communication with is city staff.
Wonderful. There, there, this is the first change, uh, that's occurred since, uh, Vice Mayor and myself have been up here. Historically, we were growing at such a pace that this process was happening every five years. And, um, if my memory serves me correct, the Hollow Lake community was being bounced back and forth between Three and Four at the rate that they didn't know who was their representative in City Hall. Um, the voters passed, um, this process, uh, back in two thousand and twelve. So we've seen the growth on the east side of town, more than we have on the west, in this ten-year period. And it's going to take another two years, possibly three years, before, uh, the west gets to the level that you've projected. There are other projects that go beyond, um, twenty twenty-three that I'm sure you were limited to based upon the criteria that you were, that you were given, but we, we know that there, there is a, uh, significant amount of interest in, um, infill projects, specifically in District Two, that wasn't considered in this, um, presentation. The city staff, um, uh, enlighten you about the infill projects that could occur in District Two that would create a significant imbalance, and basically, my humble opinion, um, skew these results?
Sure. Uh, so, you know, when we, when we do these projects, we're always limited to the available data, right? So the, the standard is to go with, you know, the gospel of the census, right? The census data is the best data that's, that's out there. Uh, and again, that's the, the bedrock foundation of this analysis and all the analysis that we do and our, our peers do in these types of analysis. Um, it's not unheard of to include, you know, short-term projections, so that you don't go through the effort and expense of doing one of these redistricting projects, uh, only for it to be, you know, like a computer that you buy at Best Buy obsolete, you should get at the store, right? We don't want that. Uh, so projecting into the near future is certainly, um, reasonable and standard practice. The question then becomes, what is the cutoff date? What's reasonable? How far in advance do you want to go? Um, and, you know, as your consultant, I'm willing to go as far as you tell me to go. Twenty, January twenty twenty-three was the date that was given to us, because these are projects that, to my understanding, are ready to go, and there's no uncertainty as to whether or not they're actually going to be built, or when they're going to be built, by. Um, so yeah, there's, there's always got to be a planning horizon that you establish, and you cut off with the understanding, you know, if we can, and I, I should, I should mention that the goal is always to, uh, try to create as much population equity as we possibly can, such that it buys you margin for error as you move down the line, that even if you do see it arise in any one city, because we're starting off from a, a very narrow set of deviation, you've got some, you've got some, um, room to play with.
Thank you. Um, the, we have a zoning code that says how many units per acre. It's a relatively simple process based on current zoning with respect to infill of what the potential could possibly be. Um, not that, um, I don't think the majority of us, um, have even thought about supporting, but there was a suggestion, east of University Drive, a, a massive high-density project. Broward County own property, but still within our, within our boundaries. Um, city attorney, um, now that, now that this process is, is on the table and discussed openly at a public meeting, um, I'm interested in a couple things. I'm interested in the blocks. I, I, I understand what a block is. I'd like to be able to kind of see how that actually looks like, that the blocks themselves weren't a part of the, uh, the pro, the, the presentation, you have, you have a collective sum, but, but kind of where those blocks are, and if that makes sense. Um, I'm, I'm aware of the potential infills in my district, I imagine my other colleagues would know the potential there as well. Um, there's also been, and if we could just go to any of the slides that have a map, it doesn't matter if it's alternative or existing, um, actually, the, the current one, there we go. Um, I, I call the, the little green zone, um, um, mayor, I, I call this, I call this your, your, your circle, um, and, and it's, and it's a reminder of that Mayor Ordis was Commissioner Three, uh, Commissioner of District Three, um, at the time of his successful, uh, mayor bid. And I guess, city attorney, tell me if I'm wrong, but you couldn't, uh, carve somebody who was already in their district, you couldn't bounce them out, essentially. So we have this little, this little carve-out, and Commissioner Seifel and I have enjoyed, um, collaborative and cooperative, um, sharing of, of the communities in this, in this general area. You could see how, you know, how intimate it is based on population. I'm, I'm aware of the potential infills in my district, I imagine my other colleagues would know the potential there as well. There's also been, and if we could just go to any of the slides that have a map, it doesn't matter if it's alternative or existing, actually, the, the current one, there we go. I, I call the, the little green zone, Mayor, I, I call this, I call this your, your circle. And, and it's, and it's a reminder of that Mayor Ordis was Commissioner Three, Commissioner of District Three at the time of his successful mayor bid. And I guess, City Attorney, tell me if I'm wrong, but you couldn't carve somebody who was already in their district, you couldn't bounce them out essentially. So we have this little, this little carve-out, and Commissioner Seifel and I have enjoyed collaborative and cooperative sharing of, of the communities in this, in this general area. You could see how, you know, how intimate it is based on population, you can imagine. So I, I guess we teamed up pretty good with this. Now, I remember sitting out in the audience when the last time this was redistricted in 2011, and at the time, there was a north-south presentation. Were, were you aware of that suggestion and is that something that was even considered?
I, I'm aware of that, I, I did read the previous report, I, I saw there various I can tell you that, you know, I had done a preliminary analysis that briefly looked at a north-south configuration for the districts going east to west. You know, that type of, of district would be revolutionary, it, it would completely blow up the existing districts. And of course, that's, that's typically not what we're seeking to do, typically we're, we're seeking to maintain the existing districts and just tweak them where possible, unless we're specifically directed otherwise, tweak them where possible so that they can bring them back into realignment. Again, because maintaining communities of interest is important, and that includes trying not to revol- revolutionize existing district boundaries.
Okay, so, I mean, 10 years ago, it wasn't revolutionary, it was actually possible based on that report that you read, correct?
You know, I, I wasn't involved in the, in the project 10 years ago. I don't know if they received direction to create north, north-south boundaries, I certainly didn't. I, I can't talk to, you know, what their thought process was when they created that. I, I can only talk to the approach that myself and my partners have taken when we've done redistricting projects.
City Attorney, is it possible, legally possible, for us to sit down with the consultant to review the blocks and some of the options that they didn't consider? I, I didn't see anything in the, I guess in the RFP or the direction that was given that we asked for anything specific. I don't believe we asked for anything non-revolutionary, I guess is, is the phrase. I, I thought all options were on the table to, to put this together. I have a, I have a question, is, can we speak with the consultant to find out the methodology and how that data was collected and then bring this thing back when we've had that opportunity? I'm not looking at delaying this any longer than, you know, than, than the next meeting because I know we probably have some, some responsibility to get this thing, as the mayor says, in for a landing. The other, the other, that's the first question. The other question I have for you, City Attorney, is, we are, we have a duty to do something, and there's five of us requiring a minimum of three, what happens if we can't get the three? We've had some volleys over millage that have gone on where we can't get a consensus, we can't get a majority, we can't even get motions. So legally, where are we?
City Attorney?
May I respond? Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Commissioner Schwartz, a couple of observations. What is the, what is the document that is controlling your decision-making tonight, which I think would be useful? And, and the citation to that document by Dr. Clark was the Charter, it's in the report, and it was studied by the consultants. It's worth noting for the record what the Charter actually says, because they only take squibs of it in the provisions of the Charter analysis. What the Charter tells us, which is the city's bible, it's your constitution in the city of Pembroke Pines, because it's a voter-approved charter, it's not one just approved by you as commission members, but the populace of the city, the electors have voted it in. And what it tells us in Section 3.02 is what the composition of districts are. And the city of Pembroke Pines shall be divided, not maybe, but shall be divided into four election districts. The geographic boundaries of the four election districts shall be composed, not maybe, but shall be composed of roughly equal populations, as the doctor mentioned, and shall be compact, as you also mentioned, proportional, also mentioned, and logically related, also discussed and described, to the natural boundaries of the neighborhoods within the city. The principles of nondiscrimination and one person, one vote shall be strictly adhered to. The boundaries of the districts within the limits of the city, and here's where it gets important to your question, as now existing are continued and may be amended as provided in Section 3.02 Subsection E. So as Dr. Clark indicated, he is bound by what you have on, on the table today. He can't take a blank slate, tabula rasa, as they call it in the, in your professional trade, and actually begin a whole new set of parameters or permutations. But let me go on if I may, Commissioner Schwartz. Subsection E, which specifically talks about redistricting and tells us the following: Following the decennial census of 2010, which has just recently occurred, a little late, as it were, and every 10 years thereafter or sooner, if it is determined by the commission that districts shall have become unbalanced due to population shifts, the city commission shall, not may, but mandatorily shall contract with an accredited four-year college or university located within the state of Florida for the purposes of two things: identifying and designating the four election districts within the city of Pembroke Pines. Just parenthetically, the county of Broward, County Commission recently went through, was going through its own redistricting program as we speak. And we happen to be counsel for the Charter of U Commission 2017 and 15, 16, and the item went on the ballot, and as you know, the county commission is interestingly, is bound by a similar set of provisions in their charter regarding taking maps and taking the consultation and the third-party objective consultant. The only difference is that in the county commission level, they chose not to work with a, a private university, just a public university. So it tells us in the Charter, for the purpose of identifying and designating the four election districts within the city of Pembroke Pines, the city commission, not may, but mandatorily shall adopt the redistricting plan as designated and provided that incorporates the principles of nondiscrimination and fairness set forth above, et cetera. So the Charter is the mantle, as the doctor mentioned, it is the premise on which he was guided to do the work he did. I never met with him either, by the way, just for reference, although I do, by the way, know Dr. Schultz, who's done work in other cities we represent, and he's been around for about 100 years, and he knows his stuff very well. The consequence of your question then is what happens if you delay the process? And, and that's an interesting question because elections in this city are by Charter and by code in March of each year in which there's an election. There's an election coming up in March of 22. The qualifying for that election is in the early part of January, I think the first week in January, the clerk can confirm that. Because the county is going through its own redistricting reapportionment plan under its Charter, we also have a relationship that is independent of this discussion with the supervisor of elections. And that supervisor of elections has the obligation to take the data from this city and the data from Broward County and overlay them on a countywide map so that people who are eligible to vote will know who they are voting for and what the districts will look like. Because as we know, districts under federal and state law and local laws as well are not based upon electors, it's based upon populations, population-driven, not, not by election of individuals who are qualified to vote. So to get back to your first question, certainly if you had no contact with, with the consultant, there's a reading tonight on the agenda, item number 15 is the first reading of the ordinance to adopt a plan and alternative, which is what the Charter directs you all to do. The consequence of which is that there's also a second and final reading, which will occur at the end of the month, I assume, or perhaps the beginning of next month, whenever the resetting of that is for the public hearing, to actually adopt the plan and submit that plan to the supervisor and make sure that your directions are fulfilled in the context of election process. So is it possible to have a conversation with the gentleman, the doctor and his staff between now and the time of the second reading? The answer is certainly. I don't believe, unless, unless and told otherwise, that there's any proprietary, any private about the data sets or the information which FAU used. They don't have any wizardry in the context of how they did their, their plan. The data and the information are all public records and public data, so there's nothing privileged, confidential, otherwise sequestered that, that, that the doctor would, would suffer a consequence by disclosing.
Yeah, so, so, City Attorney?
I just want to give you that predicate.
No, it, it's excellent. But what we heard tonight is we weren't mandated to go with the three alternatives. The presenter said that we could do other things, and I don't know how you pass something on first reading if other things are still there, because people come to a second reading expecting what was passed on first reading. And that's what's got me a little uncomfortable at, at this point. And certainly, we have a, a legal obligation to fulfill our duties to present whatever it winds up being.
To approve a redistricting plan.
Right, at, at some point.
Directive of the Charter.
But yet Broward County's having, they're going to all these public meetings, right? And we have a list, a significant list of communities who haven't been notified of potential changes here in the city. So I know we get a published agenda, but knowing the communities that, that I can see Commissioner Seifel and I potentially, there could be a potentially different outcome. These communities need to know what those outcomes might look like. Certainly District One, I mean, look, when I got here and nine years ago, I had the most folks. I had the largest district by population, and it's exploded around me. One community, one project, one residential project in nine years. So we've had some significant growth, and I just think it's unfair for those committees to, to not know what's actually happening. I mean, I'm sure all of us found out on Thursday afternoon of last week what the results are. So now we have questions. So Mayor, I'm not prepared. Item 15, I'm not prepared, and yet I'm legally charged to make a decision. I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but certainly I'd like to have an opportunity to, and again, bring this back at the next meeting. I need, I need that, that time to figure out where things are, and certainly we need to notify the communities who are going to be most impacted. That, and, and, and set aside, if there was a north-south plan, I don't know if, I don't know if the plan of the consultant was to make everything look like a cube, I don't know if that's where our population is. I don't know if it is the intent of this commission to have every district have a condo. I don't know if that's what it meant by political, but that's not political, that, to me, this is just something that just occurred every five years. Everyone says, okay, you have this one, you have this one, you have this one. So I, I'd like to, I'd like to hear what my, what my colleagues are thinking on this.
Right.
But certainly, I don't want to be pushing the reporter tonight because it's too important that our residents know exactly what exactly is going to happen.
All right, we'll see what our legal boundaries are.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just to respond to the-
City Attorney?
To Commissioner Schwartz. In the agreement between the city and FAU, the consultant, who was again the third-party objective consultant, was required to provide three map options. They, they fulfilled their commitment, they didn't, they didn't-
Correct.
Ask a detailed-
Without question.
Commissioner Schwartz, let him finish.
So to the extent that there was, within the parameters of their agreement, that's what they were required to do, they did that.
Sure. And, and, and without reservation, I understand. Thank you for your work, product.
All right.
Not question.
Commissioner Seifel. Thank you very, thank, thank you very much. Outstanding presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work, incredibly well-presented, well-worked. You're getting an A.
Thank you. My students will be happy.
I've, I've done, I've done this before, there, there are a couple of us that have, and I think three of us. There has been a succession, as you know, from, from looking at past history of, of District Four losing population as it gains. It's sort of odd that way, but it's, it's the way the Rubik's Cube of Pembroke Pines has been shifting. So when I first ran for office in 2004, Holly Lake was in District Four, and in 2011, I guess it is Commissioner Seifel, it, it shifted over to District Three because it had to lose population, and District Three was the only place where it could go. And so it hasn't been gone, going back and forth, it only shifted once. Before that, it was in District Four forever. But now, the, the, the center of, of gravity and, and growth is moving further east because we're nearing build-out. That's natural, that's what you're going to see in the numbers. You presented three plans, and I found out about the first one, the, the three of them on Thursday, when we got on our agenda, and I had a nice conversation with our good friend, Director Stam, and he helped me to understand it. And on a, on a, on a preliminary basis, I advised the communities that could be affected that, that this was coming. And so the, the, the communities, at least in District, in District Four, that could be affected by any one of the plans have, have, have already been alerted. And I would, I would assume that that's, you know, they, they would expect that from me. So I didn't, I didn't wait, I told them, I told them right away. I have my favorite of the three, and I'm not going to share it with you right now. However, I can live with, with, with either of the three because they all make sense to me. We have a duty to select a map that you draw and tweak it only if we have to, because it meets the criteria, and that's what the Charter requires. So I don't think we're going to have any difficulty picking a map this evening and, and approving it a week from now. And it's important that we do that because the supervisor of elections has a tremendous job to do in prep, in preparing for elections. It's not, we're, we're not the only municipality that they have to do districts for. And districts affect precincts, they affect voting precincts, they affect who's going to be in voting precincts, they're going to affect who can apply to run for office, they affect who wouldn't be able to apply to run for office because they'd be in another district. So we really have to make this decision, and I don't have a problem doing it, I've done it before, so I guess I'm, I'm, I'm accustomed to doing it. As I say, I have, I have a favorite of the three charts, but I think that you have done the least amount of, of disruption in, in achieving the three different goals. I like that you had three, within, within the overall goal, you, you picked a de minimis change, you picked a, one that, that was more by the numbers and another one that was more community-oriented. I think that they all necessarily work. Historically, here in Pembroke Pines, we have tried to keep a condo in each district, not because, not because of any political, but because it's, it's about, it's about each of us having something to do with senior services and, and making sure that, that, that each of us have that same perspective, because seniors are a needy community. They need transportation to a greater degree than others do, they need health services to a greater degree than others do, they need social services to a greater degree than others do because of, of, of the vulnerabilities we all have to deal with in, in, in age. And so it, it's, it's not been a political consideration in, in that sense, but more of a policy consideration. And being close to your residents gives you that, and that's the reason why we've had that sort of unwritten rule here, which I think we all inherited. It's been around since before I got here, and that's, that's a long time ago. So I want to thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I, I think that you've presented us with three very well-prepared maps, and I'm prepared to vote on, on one of them tonight and on, at the next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you. I know it takes a, a lot of work and a lot of thought process, and thank your students for, for, for participating. When I looked at, when I looked at the maps, each one of them is a possib-, I mean, realistically is a possibility in the fact that it meets the, the normal criteria of what you try to, try to, try to achieve. I guess though, and, and I know timing, as we've been hearing, you know, is certainly a, a concern, you know, for us. And I know, and I, and I almost want to say shame on us for being slow getting it, but, but I know that was because we didn't have the numbers, and so that's not, that's not anything we had control over, so I under, I understand that.
That's the pandemic and being at the mercy of the census.
Right, right, exactly. So in that perfect world, we would have had it before now and would not have maybe been in this time crunch.
Yeah, April 1st of 2020 was, 2021 was when we should have received the data.
Exactly, exactly, and it would have given us more, you know, more time to perhaps have more discussions or- more discussions or fact-finding on, and maybe look at different options that, you know, suggest different options to look at. I guess, though, the, one of the things that does still kind of bother me about all of this is something that my colleague actually alluded to, and I've been, you know, watching in the paper and online, we get, you know, we get these notices all the time, Broward County is having another meeting, they're having another district, and they've got nine, they've got nine. And they're holding these meetings in these different communities because they are, based upon one, two, three, or four, however many, you know, iterations they may have of it, they're able to then have discussions with those residents, hear those residents that may be affected by a boundary move, which would then be, you know, a different elected that they're dealing with. And that's really problematic in my mind, that's really problematic that we haven't been able to have that kind of feedback yet from our residents. And I think that, I think that no matter how small your changes are or how vast your changes may be, I think that that is something that just clearly out of respect for our residents needs to happen. We at least need to give the opportunity for them to say, I'm okay with, or I don't like this because, or I would suggest this because. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of between that rock and a hard place of understanding the timing of needing to move forward, but I still can't get past the fact that I know that residents should, as we do every other project and everything else that comes up here, give them an opportunity to be heard, and we're kind of just not doing that, so.
If I may.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that the decision to engage with the public wasn't our decision. You know, we're responding to the parameters of the contract that was requested.
And I'm not faulting you at all for that, I'm just making that as a statement of my feelings.
I just wanted to clarify on record that that wasn't our decision.
You guys are still, no, you guys are still good.
Sure, sure.
You're still good. No, you're still good.
Yeah. You know, if we talk about the Brown process, I mean, obviously, it's a much bigger geography with many more people, and frankly, with a much, much higher price tag that goes into a process like that. From my understanding, from what I know.
Say that one more time, say that, make that again, say that again.
The price tag that's involved with a process like that is considerably higher. When you ask consultants to hold nine meetings with, you know, worthy as they are, with residences at, you know, various times, at various locations, your consultant is going to charge you considerably more.
Well, that would be assuming we would say we would want nine. We don't even want nine, we have four, and we may say, we don't want four, we only want one, and we're going to discuss all four things at one time.
Sure. I'm just, again, I'm fine to do it, however you all want me to do it.
No, no, I'm here.
Yeah. I'm just mentioning it because that might have been a factor that went into the way the contract was written when it was written. And I think the other pressure that was, had to be taken into consideration, of course, is your election schedule, the fact that you've got a very tight election schedule coming up, so that might have been.
Well, we do have a, we do, and that certainly is a consideration, but yet again, I don't, the election's in March, you don't have qualifying until January, so, I mean, there's plenty, there's time.
Sure.
All right. Vice Mayor, good.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank my colleagues for their input. I agree to many of the things that have already been spoken to. The most important thing that I agree to is the public input component. So I know that's not you, so that's, we're understanding that staff is here, they hear this, and certainly, I wouldn't want to make any decision on this until I know at least that we attempted to reach to the public, particularly those that are going to be impacted by the models that you've shared with us. So hands down, public input, very necessary. I also want to thank Commissioner Schwartz for, you know, bringing up the concept of some of the infill. The infill is kind of sporadic now. We are not the fast-growing city that we once used to get national recognition for. We have slowed down tremendously, and now we are doing redevelopment, if anything. There's no more open space, really, to develop on. So those changes aren't going to be as rapid as one would expect, but they could be nevertheless impactful within each of those districts. And as Commissioner Schwartz had brought forward, I do recognize what some of those opportunities are, and I do recognize what that would create in terms of potentially balancing out. So when we speak to that, however, the thing that I kind of get focused on is that we're just kind of dealing, at least sort of fringe elements, fringe elements on each of these districts, and keep changing who their representation is, is not something that I support. I think that it's very important that, you know, our residents have a comfort of knowing where they are, who they are, who's representing them, and who they choose to represent them, certainly, within that district, because each district has a unique characteristic, gotta say it, it does. But one of the things that I do have a question on, and I can't seem to get over, is this language about a 10% deviation from the average. So you've shown your charts, your numbers, and I don't quite understand where that interpretation of 10% deviation from average comes from, because the way that this is done, this is done on a cumulative basis, and I haven't seen what the definition of that 10% deviation from average is. And what's even more important is that when I asked the attorney, what does that mean, well, they really didn't have an answer for me, but they did make it very clear to me that there is no reference in our charter on any percent change, period.
Correct.
So we could assume that 20%, if that's what we will, is what we consider to be an unbalanced situation. But the way I look at this, sometimes too, I just look, I can look at this and interpret it as, well, 10% means whoever's the lowest and whoever's the highest, not cumulative. So when I look at this here, I'm looking at maybe seven or eight percent most, it doesn't even meet the 10% criteria.
Sure. That's what we would call the spread, you know, and that's another measure of deviation, is the spread between the highest districts and the lowest districts. It's certainly been the standard practice of the team that I'm working with, which is, you know, has been Dr. Schultz. Over the 40 years that he's been doing this, the 10% number is the standard number, and it's usually calculated as an absolute value. So you take the average for the cities, you look at each individual district, and you add up the absolute value of each district, in this case, it comes up to 10.81%. And again, that's a standard procedure. There are some cities, as you correctly pointed out, that have very specific language in their chart as to what's acceptable in terms of deviation, and that charter language might say, hey, that deviation needs to be spread, or that deviation needs to be absolute, or it's up to the consultant as to how they determine what is acceptable. And so, yeah, if you say, hey, 10% arbitrary and we should do nine, you know, you could make that argument. You could say 12, you could make that argument. If you want to argue that, yeah, we need a spread, and we need to define in the charter what that threshold is, then certainly, that's a valid legal argument to take in. And of course, if you want to have lawyers argue about that, then you certainly could. However, this is the standard that we've used, is this 10% standard, that's been used for 40 years by Dr. Schultz, and this is the methodology that I've incorporated as part of his team, as first his mentor, and now, you know, kind of running the show.
And thank you for that. And I don't know that we've said that in the charter, that we will take the FAU model and use it as our standard. So all I'm trying to point out here is I have real complications with understanding what this 10% deviation means, because nobody has provided anything to me in writing what that definition is. And you've just kind of sort of explained a little bit, it could be interpreted multiple different ways. So I'm not comfortable at this point about that particular component as well. Far as I'm concerned, I'm looking at this, and I say, nobody is over 10% right now. We're not 10%? And if you add them all up, we are, but that's not the way.
Well, again, that's the difference between absolute deviation and spread of deviation.
Okay, well, I'm just sharing with you that I have.
Sure, and so if you, if a city wanted to argue that, hey, we're going to adopt as our mandate, you know, you need to have a spread, certain spread amongst the cities, then in that scenario, you could say, okay, well, the existing district's become a viable alternative, becomes a viable alternative for, under that scenario.
Okay. And I don't mean to debate with you, I just want my colleagues to understand that there's a, there's an absence of a definition of which we are being driven by at this point, and I don't know that we've all come to an agreement with that, because the work you've done, the way you've done it, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, you know, you've done a very sterile process, but we are a very dynamic community, and we do have active community members. And again, I revert back to the public participation. I'm certain that some of those community members and/or community groups have a great interest to participate a little bit in this as well, sort of the way that the county's doing. You've heard some of the arguments that are being presented on why those districts should be done certain ways and things like that, and I'd like to hear from our community as well. So for me, I know for certain that when we get to item 15, I'm not even interested in moving forward until we've had certainly public input, and then we've had a clear understanding about what is this deviation meaning for us.
Thank you.
Mayor?
All right.
Mayor, I have a question.
We need to move on.
Okay, I have a question, though.
Quickly, please. A lot of agenda.
I know, quickly. So based upon what I'm hearing from my colleagues, would it be appropriate that, I know we have item 15 coming up, would it be appropriate at this time or at item 15, when it comes up, to perhaps make a motion that?
Item 15.
That?
Can't make a motion on this. This is just a presentation.
I can always make a motion on something, can't I?
If it's a presentation, it refers to item 15.
All right, I'll wait for it. I'll wait for it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Doctor, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You'll stay around for item 15?
Certainly, absolutely.
You'll stay, you'll stay around, there's a lot of people in the audience waiting for, patiently.
Can we bring 15 out of order?
No.
Thank you all very much.
I think there's a lot of people waiting for different things in this audience.
Well, maybe we should have had the presentation after that.
Well, maybe I didn't put it in. So just, let's relax, calm down, go through our meeting. All right. Now we have, now some items we pulled from the agenda? Okay. Items we pulled from the agenda?
Mayor, Commission item 23 and 24 have been pulled from the agenda.
Okay. Items that's requested the public?
An item was requested, item 22, that item is on the agenda, so the requestor will speak at that time, the appropriate time.
All right. And now sort of board and committee appointments, I'd like to announce that I'm going to appoint Ms. Martha Ramarison as an alternate member on the Environmental Advisory Board. Would you stand, please, and be recognized?
Yay!
I'd say a couple, just push the button to speak. Now, down below, down below the mic. Sure, Mr. Ramarison, I know you're familiar with that.
Hello, thank you.
Speak into the mic, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I am really, thank you for the opportunity, I'm really hoping that I can do the best and bring great ideas that will create improvements in the city, for the city of Pembroke Pines.
Okay, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for all sharing.
All right. Ms. Bartman, Representative Bartman walked in, I heard?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. This is Representative Bartman, she has a presentation before us?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Representative.
I'm happy to be in the great city of Pines again. I love working with your city, I can't wait to go to Bow Wow Ween, I'm very excited. And what I'm really here for is because I want to introduce someone to you. I start going to Tallahassee quite frequently now with committee weeks in session, you know, I like to be at your meetings, I like to be at your events. So what we have done in my office is created a fellows program. And this is very special because this is Samantha Lowe, and she is a senior at Pembroke Pines Charter School, which is amazing, she went through the charter school system, and she is my fellow, so you're going to see her at your commission meetings, unless she has a test or like a big project. I did tell her her grades come first, she is a senior, she's trying to get into college. She's the co-founder of the Political Youth Club, and she's a member of the varsity debate team, and just overall, just an amazing young lady, wise beyond her years. She's been working with me since last May, May, when we started it. So she's amazing, and I met her last school year when she invited me to her club. And for the students that are watching out there, as Samantha and our other fellows graduate, we're going to be looking for new ones. But I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know what amazing youth you have in your community, and so you could see her and give her some special recognition for all that she does. So thank you all. Want to say something? Hello, everyone.
Hello.
It's very special to be here. I've always been, you know, interested in politics, and especially in our region. I really appreciate the work that you all do, so this is very special to be a part of it, and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
And you, and you heard that Pembroke Pines is the best city that Representative Bartman has, correct?
Yeah, of course, absolutely, of course.
Thanks.
Absolutely, the only one with Bow Wow Ween. I'm so excited about that.
Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Schwartz, go ahead.
I'm so proud of you. So your son, my son, and, yes, I know you know him, so certainly, certainly, when you're not near Representative Bartman, and he's nowhere near me, you can talk about us, it's okay. And let us know how we could do better as well, all right? So thank you again, and whatever you plan on doing is going to be awesome. And Representative Bartman, you continue, you continue to hit home runs every time you come to the plate. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative, good luck.
Mayor, if I may.
Okay.
Mayor?
Commissioner Seiple?
Thank you, Mayor. You know I'd be remiss if I didn't say how proud we are of two very strong young women that are taking leadership roles, both of you, very strong young women taking leadership roles, and we greatly appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Very good.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for the outstanding school and outstanding students you have out there. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask the indulgence of all the audience, because we have such an important item, if you would mind, have the patience, I don't think it's going to take that long, but I would like to bring up, out of order, item 15, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, if you will, I'll take item 15 at your direction, which is as follows. It's a motion of past proposed ordinance number 202121 on first reading. It's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, providing for the recreation and re-establishment of the geographic boundaries for four election districts in the city of Pembroke Pines in accordance with section 3.02 of the city charter, providing for findings and conclusions of the city commission, providing for the implementation of revised election districts to be effective for the elections to be held in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, commencing at the general municipal election in March of 2022, and thereafter, providing a form of request to the supervisory elections of Broward County, Florida, to implement the revised plan established pursuant to this redistricting ordinance, and to create functional districts consistent with the identification of geographic boundaries for the election districts, providing for the attachment of election district maps, charts, street addresses, and graphic descriptions, which shall be attached to and made a part of the ordinance. Providing for authorization and directions to the city administration to implement the terms, conditions, and provisions of this ordinance effective for the next ensuing general municipal election of March 2022, or as otherwise provided for by law, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and finally, providing for an effective date on the floor, 202121. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner.
Was that a motion, someone? Who was that? Commissioner Castillo makes a motion for approval. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute.
City, Commissioner Seiple, substitute motions in order.
I'd like to make a substitute motion, please.
Go ahead.
In deference to the conversation that I've heard from my colleagues this evening, and respecting the timeline that we are under, if in fact we need to do something very quickly because of the supervisory elections necessity to have our information, I would make a motion that we, as expeditiously as we possibly could, which I'm thinking, next as expeditiously as we possibly could, which I'm thinking next week, have a meeting where all of the, uh, uh, city residents are, um, acknowledged of this meeting, and that the purpose of the meeting would be to have a presentation, again, on not only what was presented to us by, um, by our gentleman this evening, our presenter this evening, but also to be able to have input from our residents and listen to what, uh, what their concerns are, what their ideas are, and their comments on the three, although it was really six, uh, uh, presentations that were given to us tonight. And Mayor, I have to add to that motion that it is, um, extremely important that we show that respect to our residents, and so that would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Yes, I second that.
Second, Commissioner Castillo? Uh, okay, who would like to speak on the-
I would.
Commissioner, uh, Seiple, you're done?
Yeah, I am, Mayor, but I, I guess I would just like to ask City Manager, City Attorney, um, because timing is so, is so very important. If it would be possible, today is, today is Wednesday, if there could be something, uh, this, if this could be scheduled by, say, next Tuesday, Wednesday of next, of next week, so that we would have an opportunity to have that meeting with our residents, and then for us to be able to take that information back, because then the item will be coming before us again at, is it on our very next commission meeting after that?
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Manager?
Yes, if you have it, it probably would have to be by Tuesday, because we prepare agenda and submission to you no later than Wednesday, which would be the next day. So, any input from the community, we would have to incorporate in that item.
And I, and I hear you, City Manager, on that, and I certainly would hope that if in fact it's not possible to get it together by that Tuesday, that certainly, we have, we have a bit of a leeway on our commission agenda to get it to us. I think the important part is, it's more important that we have this meeting and we have the opportunity for residents to be heard. Um, perhaps the agenda may or may not be, may not even be held up by one day, um, because that has happened in the past for various reasons.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Manager?
Yes, the second point is, I think we need to get confirmation from our consultant. I don't know where he went.
Is, is there?
If you have availability on Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. Wednesday?
I can't hear him.
It has, you have to come to the mic, sir.
Again, I'm, I'm happy to work with- This is the commission and the city. Uh, personally, the Wednesday evening would be more convenient for me, but if we need to do it Tuesday, I could make that happen too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do schedule it for Wednesday. Uh, the next item I would need from you is authorization to, uh, compensate, uh, FAU for that, because we are able to hire FAU under, uh, my purchasing, uh, ability not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
You're not doing a side of goodness to your heart, Doctor?
And this would exceed that. I don't know what the fee would be.
I'm a Bay American, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Manager, we understand that.
So, I, I would need a motion also to be able to see-
Could I add that to my, could I add that to my motion?
Hold on, folks, hold on.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a chance, please? When you're ready.
You all defer to.
Thank you, Mayor. In the context of the motion being made by the commissioner, there is a provision in the contract that in the event that there is an excess beyond the base amount, that the commission can authorize the dollar value in the contract for hourly base services.
Right, so I would then recognize-
Recognize Commissioner Seiple for an amendment, which I think I know what it is.
Mayor, could I, could that language just be added to my motion that, that, uh, what City, City Attorney just, um, just spoke of? That would be part of my motion.
I'll second that also.
Second on the amendment. All right, uh, okay.
Yes.
On the amendment, call the roll, please.
Uh, I have a question.
On the amendment? We're on the amendment. Call the roll, please, I have a question. It's, sorry, you seconded the amendment?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Sir.
In terms of making the timeframes for the, um, um, I'm, I'm all for public input. In fact, that's what I thought this hearing was about, but, okay. Um, I, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, with the amendment. In terms of the timeframe and the supervisor of elections, and the larger rights of people to vote in, in, in the elections on, in March, because those cannot be changed, do you feel that we have enough time, uh, if we, if we move to do this meeting, and then have another meeting, uh, uh, two weeks from now, I guess, uh, the third Wednesday, and then adopt, uh, at second reading, will that give us enough time to work with the supervisor of elections and get this thing done?
City Attorney?
I respond, Mayor. The answer is you have to make that request to the supervisor directly to verify their timeframe. I can't answer that question this evening, but I can tell you that, um, there is probably going to be a time crunch to be able to make sure that they get all of our data in time. They'll relay that against the election process going into next March.
So, so we go into this understanding, we're going to have a public hearing, and then we have to select a map, and it has to be passed on first and second. Um, 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 and, and this will also give you an opportunity to speak to supervisor of elections, because if we have to do an, and, uh, an emergency meeting in order to make, in order to make a deadline, we can do that as well, uh, for the second reading, or even possibly-
And again, we're on the amendment of, of money.
I'm sorry?
We're on the amendment as, for money. That's what we're talking about, on the amendment.
No, the amendment is as amended. I'm talking about the, the approach.
Okay.
So, so, so is, is there enough time to do all these things, City Attorney?
Again, I can't answer the outside question. I can tell you that the second reading would have been, under the terms of the proposal before you, November the third. It was not going to be-
Okay.
So, that was in, that was already set in the, in concrete, so to speak, as a public hearing.
All right, want to make sure we make our timeframes. Thank you.
We will. City Clerk, just for the record, we will make every effort through the city administration, through, uh, the City Clerk's office. Um, you've, you've met Quentin Morgan, and one of our assistant city attorneys has worked with, uh, staff working on the ordinance. We can also make contact with Mr. Scott's counsel, general counsel for the, um, supervisor now is the general counsel of the county attorney's office. That's who represents, and we can make that call through.
Okay.
Yes.
City Clerk, would you read the amendment, please?
Commissioner Seiple made a substitute motion.
Substitute amendment, did you mean amendment?
And the amendment relates to authorizing, the commission authorizing city administration to, uh, include the cost or authorize the cost of having the consultant-
Does everybody understand the amendment?
Yes.
All right, call the roll for the amendment, please.
Mayor, I think we have public at once.
No, she included it in her motion.
What's that?
I believe the commission included the amendment in her motion.
No, she made an amendment, City Attorney. Did she make an amendment?
Well, I believe she included it.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment. City Clerk, call the roll.
We have a member of the public.
What's that?
A member of the public.
On the amendment?
Yes.
Or the motion?
On the item sixteen.
Okay, I'll call you after the amendment. We're voting on the amendment now, okay? City Clerk, call the roll on the amendment.
Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, item fifteen, with as amended. Ms. Lawrence, would you like to come up and say a couple of words? Name your name and address for the record.
Um, Larissa Chances, one eight four one zero, Northwest Eleventh Court. I'm happy to be here. Um, I just want to state and make it very clear that it's very important for all of us this, to get this redistricting correct. Um, I know there's a lot of concerns in the community, and thank you for taking the time to voice that we needed to have input, and we needed to be heard, and, and know, um, the process and what the proposals are before you guys can vote on it. I know I heard a lot of information in the presentation about population. I'm not sure, I have attended the other Broward redistricting meetings, and I'm not sure if the twenty eighteen, uh, redistricting legislation affects, you know, our redistricting. I don't know if it's just based only on our charter, because I hear about population, but I don't hear anything about, um, the diversity and the balance in the districts. And I have a concern, um, maybe this is something that can be addressed when we have the meeting, um, and to see what the composition, because I think these districts were created long ago, and I know one of the commissioners mentioned that it's, uh, an accepted and, and just a created district, you know, but it doesn't have to be that way. We need to, um, look at, um, there were also some talk about, um, having a condo-ish district, but when I look at condos, and if you have a condo that has five hundred, uh, residents, and another one that has fourteen thousand, you see an imbalance there, and I think we need to address all of those items.
Thank you.
Let me see what it is.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the motion as amended?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, put, you gotta put your, so I can know your end line here. Uh, Commissioner Schwartz, you had something else?
No, we have a member of the public, I'll wait.
Okay. Sir? This is on the motion as amended?
No, on item fifteen.
Yeah.
In general-
Item fifteen as a motion as amended?
Yes.
Name your name and address, please.
Ram Tivari. Uh, I live in District One, and, uh, I was very interested in knowing the process. And I think, uh, Vice Mayor had a good point about the ten percent, though it is not part of the charter, but that was the criteria used by the consultant. And I do not know whether that will be validated, uh, when you have further meeting. Second point is, I would like, yes, as was said by other commissioners, public input is very important. So, I live in District One, and that area is being moved. So, I support public input. Thank you.
And you're in my district.
We're in the mayor's district.
I just need a little, little brevity, you know. Okay, Commissioner Schwartz, we're going to move on.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. I, thank you, Commissioner Seiple, um, for, um,
I'll see you soon.
Uh, for putting this ball in motion. Um, I'm, I still want to meet with the consultant, uh, prior to. There's some comments that were just raised, and those are some of the conversations that I wanted to have, uh, with respect to, um, making sure that, that population is being equally represented, and that we're not leaving anybody out. Um, the, uh, the consultant is looking at the fourteenth, we've authorized those dollars. Uh, the City Attorney mentioned November third. Is there a, um?
That was the second hearing, not the order.
Your microphone, if you can, because we have more than one mic, it's going to cut out. Yeah, so, so we're not logged into the third, it could be the second meeting in November, right?
He's going to schedule a special meeting to consider it for second reading.
Right.
But the motion that would be, if it's adopted this evening on the side, and we'll basically pass it on, uh, well, not adopt it in first reading.
Right.
Pass it on to a, to a, to a future time.
Right, and then for the, for the purposes, because we can't, we can't mess this up. Um, it's super important that, uh, that the clerks and the, and the legal postings are like a thousand percent correct, because we cannot make a mistake. We've made mistakes before.
May I be clear, if I may respond, Mr. Mayor?
Please, City Attorney?
You're going to need a, a, a fully advertised second first reading, because you, you cannot adopt this item this evening without something-
Right, and there's a thirty, and it's a thirty day requirement, correct?
Well, there's not thirty days, but the end result is that there has to be compliance with state law in the context of the posting.
Got it. Got it. I'm ready.
All right, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to, again, um, I, I know we're trying to rush forward, and-
Rushing, oh, it's a good point, we got to take it.
And I, I, I'm not quite clear on where that, too, is defined in, in the charter. Is there anything in the charter that references the specific timing of, of-
City Attorney?
If I can, Mr. Mayor?
Please?
In looking at the charter, it basically requires that following the decennial census in twenty-ten and every ten years thereafter, or sooner, if there's an imbalance and such, what it says is the commission shall contract with the entity such as a four-year college university, which you've done, located in the state of Florida, and the commission shall then adopt the redistricting plan as designated, provided that the plan incorporates the principles of nondiscrimination and fairness set forth in the, in the charter. So, the answer is, isn't, the, the, the charter recognizes, a living document, recognizes you have an election coming up in March. Um, so it behooves the commission to consider taking its action to be able to align with that election process, which is in the code and the charter, requiring when you have your elections.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that it, there is no specific timing other than it follows, and so whatever process we follow in order to assure the fairness and the inclusiveness, I think is the most important thing. Um, the other thing, too, that I would, I would also ask is that, um, you know, i- i- if this meeting is going to be held where the three versions that we saw tonight are going to be presented, I would certainly, uh, ask my colleagues to support that at least those folks who are going to be directly impacted, at least get a direct mailing.
Okay.
A direct mailing.
Mr. Mayor? I don't think that's unfair.
If we're going to have it next Tuesday, I don't know if, uh, that information we can get out in time with a direct mailing. Uh, I could look at, um, perhaps if we can isolate it through a robo-call, or if there's some other means. I understand what you're trying to do, but I don't believe they would get the information timely.
Well, let's, let's find out how they can get it.
We'll, we'll do our best-
All right.
To notify, uh, the way I understand the comment, are those areas that are being proposed to be affected in any one of the, uh, first three options?
Yep, correct.
See, Manager, we have a water bill system.
Vice, Commissioner Schwartz, we're moving on.
Okay?
That, that will not work, because that's done by zone, and I can't tell you what zone is up next.
We're ready, call the roll on the motion as amended.
And Mayor, just to clarify, you're looking to schedule this special public hearing for the thirteenth, which is next Wednesday, is that correct?
Uh, I, I guess everybody agreed with that.
I, I didn't, uh, that's what I assumed it was, next Wednesday.
Let's be clear, so there's no, there's no stone left in turn to give the administration a little more time to-
Correct.
Get prepared, and the, and the-
City Clerk, call the roll.
And the consultants. Commissioner Seiple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for your patience. Thank you all for your patience. We are now going back to the consent agenda, item one through thirteen. What is your pleasure?
Ten, please, Mayor.
Hold on now, let me get that. Ten for Saipal. Any others?
Twelve, Mr. Mayor.
Twelve, Vice Mayor. Anybody else? Hearing none. Let me have a call on all of the items other than ten and twelve, City Clerk. Commissioner Castillo?
Can I ask, I see, I see many residents here from the Chapel Trail community. Can I ask that we show respect to them, and since they've been waiting, and take number twenty-two out of order?
I'm in the middle of a vote, Commissioner.
Yes, I know.
Okay, so let, let me get through this vote.
Okay.
Trying to ma, I'm trying to get as fast as we can. Okay, City Clerk, go ahead.
Mayor, who was the maker of the motion for the consent, to approve consent?
Oh, I didn't have one. I'm sorry. I'll, I, I need a motion? Moved by Commissioner Schwartz through second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Saipal.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Saipal?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, now there's a request to bring up, Commissioner Castillo, what item?
Twenty-two.
Mayor, I was gonna ask for twenty-one also, since it pertains to it.
Yeah, we can do it together.
But I thought we had some items from the consent agenda that were pulled that needed to be discussed.
Okay, let's, 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 let's just go through, two items on a consent agenda. Let's do that first. Item ten, Commissioner Saipal.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the purchase and agreement from the sole source vendor sent to port a business of NCS Pearson Inc. for learning curriculum and assessment testing materials in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight sixty-eight to help support career and technical education of the City of Pembroke Pines Charter Middle and High Schools for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year pursuant to section thirty-five point eighteen, parent C, parent three of the city's Code of Ordinances.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Schwartz, new discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Saipal.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is, is an issue that's really important. For a, a good number of years, I've had discussions with our city manager, with, with some of our principals, with Principal Flowers when she was still here in, in our system, particularly discussing vocational education and the need for vocational education, because we, while the reality is, I guess, most of us are really hopeful that our children or grandchildren will go on to college for a college-related profession. The reality of it is, there are some, some students that either choose not to, because that's not what they want to do, or don't maybe have the capability to feel like they can do well in college, but they want to learn a skill. We still need plumbers, we still need mechanics, we still need air conditioner folks. While that has changed a little bit, and I'm, and I'm gonna ask Principal Bear, I spoke with him earlier to come up and talk briefly about this, while that whole career has changed a little bit now because of so many things that are on the internet and the webs, and, and all of that that's available out there, that type of technology, it has changed, sort of, the skill levels that are needed for that plumber. Because now they need to understand more engineering, they need to understand a lot of different mechanics. Instead of just fixing an engine, they may need to figure out how to build a whole engine, and, and that all plays into that. So Principal Bear, if you would, please come up and, if you could just give us kind of a brief description of this, the Florida Career and Professional Education Act.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everybody. Yeah, we call them CTE courses. They're called Career Technical Education Courses that are kind of similar to what we would use to think of as vocational. But what they've done is really become focused on kind of the computer software end of it. And at our school, we, we do it in the middle schools. We have a computer and business application class, as well as a digital information technology class that the students can take and get a certification, and the teachers actually get a, a bonus from the state for every student that passes the, the final exam. And then we have several, at the high school now, web design, journalism, cybersecurity, robotics, and business and entrepreneurial, which we started this year, all are considered CTE courses. And we've also, on the other hand, seen an increase in our student body at Pines Charter going to Sheridan Tech for part of their day, which has been around for, for many years, and has many great programs. But traditionally, as a college preparatory school, we haven't used it to the extent it is now. And I think much of the credit from our transportation authority, Rich Pacero, made sure that those kids had a bus to come between schools, because it does require them to be half day at one and half day at the other. So we have a, a record number of our students doing that, and in that, that location, they get to see some of the larger things, like automotive, cosmetology, culinary, even some web design things over there. So we are seeing an increase there, certainly demand. I think we have a good balance at, at this point, between the, the, the kind of technology and, and, and the old school kind of vocational stuff.
Thank you, Principal Bear, and I just wanted you to speak on this, because I wanted our folks out there that are listening to this, to, to know that those opportunities are out there for their, for their child, if that's the direction that your child wants to go in, that that opportunity is out there, and they should go, if they're curious about it, go to guidance, go to somewhere, and, and start asking those questions, even in the middle school, to start, you know, getting on that path of where they're, where they're looking to go for that. So, so that was the purpose of pulling that item for tonight. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any, anything else on that item?
No, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Good. Discussion? Hearing none, City Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Saipal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now, I'm gonna ask you your indulgence. We have a couple items, one that Vice Mayor pulled, we can come back to that. Would you like to get to the commission item, so we can take care of the residents that have been waiting?
I'm just gonna do it as a public.
Okay, so we've got commission item is number twenty. Vice Mayor? We're gonna get to you, folks. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is discussion and possible motion to direct the city attorney to draft a resolution recognizing and supporting the religion and historical significance of Diwali, the festival of lights, which will occur on November fourth, twenty-twenty-one, including Diwali's predominant and sombering message of tolerance, compassion, and the embrace of victory of good over evil, and which continues to resonate with our American spirit and the fabric in which appears as a prominent theme of life for Hindus, Skis, Janes, Buddhists in America and all over the world.
Move, move. Were you moving that, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
The Vice Mayor moved, I heard a second by Commissioner Saipal. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We do have members in the audience tonight that are in support of this item. And if I may allow the public to speak.
Sure.
On, in behalf of this item, I'd like to ask Mr. Ram Thivari, who is the Public Relations Manager of the South Florida Hindu Temple, to, to.
Destroy.
Make his comments, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I will read it, because I may forget few things. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, thank you for including this resolution today in city commission meeting. I live in District One. I am a member of Hindu American Foundation. It is a non-profit, non-partisan advocacy organization for Hindu Americans. I serve as public relations person for South Florida Hindu Temple. I'm a member of Diversity and Heritage Advisory Board. I'm a member of Interfaith Advisory Board, and also I'm a member of Humanity Project. So on behalf of your Hindu American constituents, I would like to request to Siri to recognize the significance of Diwali, which has been done, that falls this year on Tuesday, November fourth. This is a day of celebration at Hindu temples. Have you been to any Hindu temple, any of the, please do visit? And for this.
Did you ask who's been to? Did you ask who has been to?
Yes, I have, yes. Oh, okay, okay. That, that, that's good.
Yes, Ram.
That's good. So this is a day of celebration at Hindu temples, a cause and a time for Hindu Sikhs. Sikhs have Guru Dwara, if you know. Jain and Buddhist American families together to light small lamps around their homes and pray for knowledge, peace, and universal well-being. Diwali is one of the most popular festivals, symbolizes the spiritual victory of light over darkness, good over evil, knowledge over ignorance. It brings immense pride to know that City of Pembroke Pines, recognizing the contribution of Hindu Americans to our vibrant and diverse social fabric. Diwali designation would send a powerful message to the Hindu American community in the City of Pembroke Pines, and help educate all Americans about our traditions. I had attached a Diwali kit for all the commissioners to know what is Diwali, how it is celebrated. Full-on community members, they are here, I think at least about ten or eleven community members are here.
You wanna stand up, please? Thank you for coming, thank you.
And more wanted to come, but today being the work day, and next day also work day, so they could not be here, but they have assured me that there is full support for this resolution. And if may I ask one more member to speak, can I?
Sure.
Farida?
And remember, we limit our speakers to three minutes.
But for each one.
Name and address for the record, please?
Farida Rajkumar, one oh one, Fifteenth Avenue.
Thank you.
Namaste, as we say in our culture, that means the light in me greets the light in every one of you, and good evening. Uh, thank you so much for passing this resolution and for acknowledging the Hindu residents of this beautiful community. This sets the tone for many other cities to follow suit in doing the same in recognizing us as contributing members of this great community and this country for everything that we've done in humanity, in the areas of math, and science, and research, and technology, and all of those other areas that we'd like to get acknowledgement from at times. And also, this allows us to go out into the greater community as we light our lamps and our homes are lit on our holidays, for our friends and our neighbors, and for people in the community to know who we are and why we're doing what we're doing, and to see that we are just like them, honoring our traditions and cultural rich heritage that is thousands and thousands of years old. So it's an honor for us to be here, and we hope that you will share and learn, as Mr. Thivari has provided a toolkit for you to learn more about our heritage. Visit our temples, please come out to our festivals, connect to your constituents who are Hindus, because they live here, they vote for you, and they have these expectations of the city just like you have expectations of the residents. So once again, we are very grateful on behalf of the Hindu American Foundation, on behalf of the South Florida Hindu Temple, on behalf of VHPA, and the greater Hindu community in Pembroke Pines. Thank you so much for your time.
And, and thank you.
Thank you.
Whenever the city has asked for you to come out and support us, you've always been there. We appreciate that. Mayor? Commissioner Castillo, they're gonna vote on the motion?
Thank you very, very much. I think this is a great idea, and in fact, I liked, I liked the, the, the item so much that I asked the city manager if he could provide me with a list that I've actually been waiting to review from the Heritage and Diversity Board, which this commission has not seen, of all of the events that they want to promote in order to celebrate the beautiful heritage of all the residents in the city. So, Mr. Manager, if you could, if you could bring that to our next meeting, I'd really appreciate it. Alternatively, I will ask for it as a commission item. I think, I think you should bring it. But the point that I wanted to make was, the contributions made by the Hindu community in Pembroke Pines are significant, and they're never, never overlooked. Just today, on the agenda, there was an item involving the Bill Armstrong Park. And that is taking a, a theme in, in recognition of all communities, but in particular yours. The, the street name was renamed Peace Way. It, we, we unanimously voted to name the Recreation Center there, the Gandhi Center. By the way, Mr. City Attorney, I'm, I'm reminded that a, a resolution reflecting that unanimous vote hasn't come here. That's a detail that I, I'll look for at the next meeting as well. We need to, we need to make sure that the community understands that this is a city that respects and values diversity, not just in the words that we do, but in the things that we do. Not the words that we say, but the things that we do. That's how you value diversity. So I want to congratulate you, I want to congratulate the Vice Mayor for, for this excellent item that I'm very, very happy to support. Thank you.
And. And I know Davy sometimes gets ahead of us on some celebration, but when they see ours, they'll be amazed. They'll be amazed. I want Mayor Paul to come over and shoot me.
We can add that resolution next, next meeting, Mr. City Attorney?
City Attorney?
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor, I, I'll close your, your item. Go ahead.
Sir?
Done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, City Clerk, call the roll.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Saipal?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all, thank you for being so patient.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, this item will be on the agenda at the next meeting as a formal resolution is requested by the Vice Mayor.
Okay, we'll notify everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Saipal.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to instruct city administration to hire a traffic engineer consultant to assist in the creation of a master traffic plan for Pembroke Pines with special attention given, but not limited to areas around schools.
Second, second by Commissioner Saipal, Commissioner Castillo, go ahead, Commissioner Saipal.
Thank you so much. I've requested this item because I think it is important. The smart, logical way to plan for traffic flow for short-term, midterm, and longer-range planning. This plan should provide us with suggested designs, appropriate agencies to work with, possible funding sources and estimates of project costs, timeframes for not only the beginning of a project, but also the length of time for completion. This formation of a master traffic plan for our city will help ensure that we are moving in the right direction, spending our money in the most cost-effective way, and making sure that no work is duplicated by overlapping projects. There are traffic flow problems throughout the entire city, each with their own uniqueness. Those unique needs only strengthen the need for this master traffic plan. Whether at my town hall meetings or in person, I have spoken with many residents, and they agree that this master traffic plan is a very good initiative. I'm asking my colleagues for support on this item, twenty-one this evening, with direction to city, city administration.
Mayor? Great items, uh, City, Commissioner Saipal. Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much.
Twenty-one.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I, I agree. I think that we need to have a, a traffic engineer hearing firm take a look and help us to craft this, um, traffic master plan. It's the right way to, it's the right way to approach it, and I expected that, that administration would, would bring this thing forward, but I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see it equally come up this way. I have two comments. First, there are certain, there are certain things that really can't wait, and we've already discussed certain of them in, at, at these town hall meetings. And we're gonna be, we're gonna be discussing one of those in, in a moment. We discussed several at our meeting with, with En Quintada, and I think that those make sense, and they should, they should certainly proceed. The second point is, I hope that we choose to do this engagement the same way that we've done other engagements, and ask the commission auditor to find someone. I think independence in this is very important. The traffic engineering community locally, there's very few firms of, of merit that haven't done some work in Pembroke Pines. So I think it's important that you have somebody that, 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 that is totally new, that has never worked in Pembroke Pines before, come in, take a fresh look at what's going on, because, because engineers have egos. We, we all do, to one, to one extent, to the other. And no one wants to be pointed at and said, oh, you're recommending this, but you, you were the engineer of record on a project, and, and, and you didn't recommend it then, but you're recommending it now. And it becomes, it just becomes a problem. Additionally, I think it's important that whoever we select work for us and with administration, and not the other way around. This is our traffic plan, and if whoever it is that informs us about what, what the component should be, should not be worried about such things as, oh, you know, I don't know what this will do to my budget, or what. And, and, and that's what happens to consultancies when they're not independent. They get bent over a, a, a number of different agendas, and I, I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for the best possible solutions to deal with traffic in Pembroke Pines. I'd like to see the best possible ideas for advancing the projects as quickly as possible. I'd like to see the best possible ideas for, for, for dealing with the issues that we have. And that requires a great deal of competence, which we would get, and independence. So I think the way to do this is, and is the way that, that I suggested, is through the city auditor. Every single time we have asked the city auditor to hire a professional for us, we've hit a home run, each and every time. And I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that administration and staff can't do it that way, but I think that this is the right way to do on this issue. We must succeed in dealing with this traffic issue. There is no room for failure. There is no opportunity for missing the pitch. We have to hit it, and it has to go over the wall, and it has to be done the first time. So I think that, I think that it's very, very important. Let's get somebody independent, who's not connected to any of the past projects in Pembroke Pines. Let's bring them down here, a fresh set of eyes, and let's get this thing done. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, when you get a moment, please, Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Saipal, I just wanted to thank you for the meeting that we held the other night down at the West Campus. It was a great meeting. It was informative, and residents had their suggestions heard by us, and I heard, and I know that we need to fix a lot of these things, and a master plan is the way to do it. So I want to thank all the residents who came out and gave us great suggestions. We are in the works. So, City Attorney, I'm sorry.
Just to create, the, the public record is required. To engage an engineer, a surveyor, or architect must comply with state statute. That's the CCNA, the Consultants Competent Negotiations Act. It is a process set forth by state statute. It has cost, expense, and parameters that have to be followed. So in the event that the commission were to direct the creation of this particular assignment to an outside professional engineering firm, you'd have to go through the process to get to that firm, just as a matter of course. And, and there's a cost and expense involved in both in the engagement, of course, in the negotiation for the contract.
I think item twenty-one is very clear of the direction. Okay, further, further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to weigh in.
Further discussion, Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Dodge?
Do you need something?
Yeah, I just have a question.
Well, go ahead.
The, the recommendation was for the commission auditor to select someone. I think I'm hearing something different from the city attorney.
It's not in the motion, Mr. Manager.
Well, there's nothing in the motion.
Yes, there was. Commissioner Saipal's motion is out of order.
Okay.
Right, hire a city engineer. Okay, Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. That's the fun part of live TV. That's the fun part of live TV. We can't talk about this ahead of time, so, so it, it, it's a process, folks. Um, look, I am fully supportive of trying to make things better. But that starts with letting the public know that we already have a process that's gotten into it, that's gotten to us to this point, and it's failed them. The decision-makers failed them. When you put things in places that they don't belong. And elected officials of Pembroke Pines make those decisions. There's no sugarcoating it. A few short months ago, we had a project that was, um, discussed here, something that the city was under contract for, at Pines and Dykes. Had gone on for five years with unanimous votes. And yet, the public was told that there wasn't a traffic plan. But yet, during that five-year period, we had FDOT, and we had, and we had, we had presentations from our engineers, and the widening of Sheridan, and overpasses built. This isn't a, this isn't new. There's nothing new about this. What I'm hearing from the city attorney is it's gonna take a hell of a lot longer than what it should, and it doesn't fix today's issue. That, that's, that to me, I'm all, I'm all about trying to make things better, and sometimes you have to change to make things better. Um, if there is, is something that our commission auditor, if there's a firm that our commission auditor can find that will make our city better, I'm all for that. Our city, um, uh, commission auditor found an attorney back in two thousand and, late two thousand and eleven, that got us into litigation with Towne Southwest Ranches.
Point of order, Mayor.
Point of order.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, do you wanna say something? Yeah, I think we have an event next week, and, uh...
Yeah, we're going to court.
City Attorney?
We're going to court. It's a may-may in commission. There is a matter set for trial next Monday between the cities, the city and the town. I would prefer that you be limited in the context of...
I'm, I'm limited, I'm limited to you, because the only thing I'm going...
There's a risk in that conversation.
Yeah, there's, there's risk, and I'm not going to talk about how I think the trial's gonna go, but I, I've already had the bills of over two million dollars brought to this day as for review in litigation costs. So, when we, when we go through item fifteen, and you see the growth of our population, that doesn't happen overnight. And certainly, the frustration of some of the folks sitting here are the same folks that sat here back in two thousand and seventeen when promises were made, and it hasn't been I want to thank the city manager for, um, working with, uh, En Quintada, and expressing my displeasure with how long it took to fix, and the things that we can do at Charter West to fix it. Mayor, I received a, an email just before the meeting I had requested from Somerset. They're not here tonight. I knew they weren't gonna be here tonight. They told me they weren't gonna be here tonight. So, I asked them to provide me what they sent out to their parents today, and I said I would read it into the...
Commissioner Schwartz? With all, with all the, Commissioner Schwartz, with all due respect, run item four. Run item twenty-one. You keep elaborating, you've got, you've got caution by the city attorney on one comment. Stay on the, on the, on the item twenty-one, please. Somerset, we're talking about a traffic engineer. We're being specific here.
We are being specific, because if it wasn't for the, I, I'm not looking at treating symptoms, sir, I'm looking at fixing problems.
Well, we are gonna fix it if you pass this item.
And if, and if the, and if the problem is occurring as a result...
City Attorney, am I correct? Run item twenty-one as, as motion?
The item before the commission on the, on the floor is item twenty-one regarding the engagement of a traffic engineer or to, in consistent with the motion of Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you.
Mayor, when you, so, when you have a moment, I have a...
In conclusion, if the mayor would allow me at some point...
As long as you just stay on the subject, that's all.
At some point, read into the record what Somerset said to their entire parent population to fix the issue tonight. That's what I want these folks to hear.
Okay.
Is how we're fixing it tonight.
Okay.
So, you let me know when you're ready to do that, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to make amendment to the...
And let me, let me just say one thing, uh, Commissioner Schwartz. Every item passed by this commission, every item, is planned by a planning council, goes to another planning council, then it goes to a homeowners association for their approval or disapproval, then it goes to the county in most cases for their planning council to approve or disapprove. So, let me just, it, something that's passed by this commission, it's just not passed su, you know, just quickly. It's done with merit. Some like it, some don't. Okay, uh, Comis, uh, Vice Mayor, good. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make certain that, uh, as we move forward with this, uh, master traffic plan, I mean, the whole thing in my mind is we're talking about traffic calming and, and trying to redirect traffic where it belongs.
Correct.
So, I, I just don't want that to be lost in this process. This isn't just doing roadways, this is also doing traffic calm...
Right.
Measures throughout the entire city as well, too. So, thank you.
Okay.
I have an amendment.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
I would like to, uh, I would like to amend the motion to include direction to the city auditor to fi, to follow the, uh, CCNA...
CCNA.
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 Correct process, uh, in, uh, selecting, uh, an independent, um, um, engineering firm to perform this, uh, this function.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it because it's the law.
What's that?
I'll second it because it's the law.
Mayor, if I can clarify?
Uh, City Attorney?
Section two eighty-seven point oh fifty-five applies to any public entity engaging an architect, engineer, or a land surveyor. The issue is, you have to comply with the, whether you're the city doing that compliance, or you're an outside firm that's doing it for the city.
So, we have, we have it in the...
The law is required.
Okay.
The law's required either way.
Okay, so we don't need a motion if the law is required?
No. The motion is to, and, uh, is direct the city en, the city, uh, auditor to conduct the process, to select the vendor, to enter into a contract with the vendor, and to bring that vendor to us.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes, Mayor?
You're gonna second the motion?
I seconded the motion.
Okay. Any, but, any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I don't, um, I'm, I'm still trying to understand why the auditor is necessary, but if that's the will of my colleagues, that's fine. The only thing I get a little bit concerned with is that our auditor has a cap dollar value, and I am not interested in using all that money that we have.
Point of information?
Point of information, Commissioner Castillo.
Uh, Vice Mayor, the, uh, the, uh, there is a, there is a sub-budget within, within the total budget that calls to this, that we, from time to time, will ask for a special duty from the auditor. And the reason that I'm asking for it is so that the, um, the integrity and independence of the audit report can never be questioned. It will be unimpeachable, because it wasn't selected by staff or this commission, it was selected by an independent, uh, CPA firm.
City Manager?
And from time we've gone to them, they've hit a home run.
City Manager, do we have a budget for the auditor?
There, there is a, uh, budget for the auditor, there is money set aside for, uh, any special project that the commission would want. I'm not certain how much that is, but certainly we can look at it.
And Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor, because I still have the floor.
Thank you. So, uh, I, and, and I appreciate what my colleague had made reference to, um, you know, and, and if, and if there's a way to do the auditor outside of the dollar, the budgeted money that we have for audit purposes, then, then I'm okay with doing that.
They're just selecting it.
But, but the fact is, is I know about that money that is for special projects.
Point of information?
And I think that those projects are better served for what an auditor does. The city has outsourced a substantial amount of services, we have a substantial amount of contracts. We're going to be hearing some information regarding, uh, their most recent audit on one of our contractors. Uh, it is alarming enough that I think that we need to be paying attention...
Point of clarification?
...to how we spend that money.
Commissioner Castillo, please.
In other audit activity with our other contractors, because it is costing this city, uh, money, uh, in the absence of having an auditor do those audits. So, I'm not, I'm not comfortable spending those monies, uh, for, for this type of operation.
Point of clarification?
Mayor?
All right, let's stay on the item.
Mayor, this is my item, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Seifel. On your end.
Thank you so much. Um, city attorney, city manager. So, the issue's been brought up about having our commission auditor go through the legal process of finding a, a consultant to perform this duty, and then the question of the cost of the commission auditor, uh, doing that job, doing that task. Would it be, uh, would it be appropriate that, um, we, we do know that, that we have a certain budget for the commission auditor with very specific items that, areas of, that we choose for them to audit and report to us on? But there is some, and I know you called it sub-money, what, a, a different, uh, an additional pot of money that has been available, that should a project perhaps be a little bit more than what it was intended, you know, initially thought it was going to be. Would it be appropriate that if we went to this commission auditor, and they came back to us and said, "Yes, we're, we're gonna do this, but it's gonna be X number of dollars for us to do that," and that X number of dollars is more than what would be available outside of their own particular budget, that it would, it would be up to the city manager at that point with his discretion to move forward with that?
Point of clarification?
Okay.
Can I get an answer on that first?
City Attorney? City Attorney?
City Manager?
I'm sorry, Mayor, what?
There, there was a question by Commissioner Seifel.
Oh, my goodness.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. I was talking to the city attorney.
I'm sorry. Okay, city manager. If in fact we went the, we went the way of the city, of the commission auditor selecting this consultant, that's not in the normal that we've agreed to for his year's worth of work at whatever, you know, the different areas we've asked them to audit with the dollar amounts that are attached to each of those. There is some, uh, uh, other additional monies that have been, always have been available in the case that one of the projects, one of the audits that the city, uh, commission auditor was looking at ran over because of some unexpected item that they found. What I'm asking is, if in fact that the commission auditor came back to us and said, "It's gonna cost X number of dollars for us to find this consultant for you to do this," is, is the city manager then, in his discretion, allowed to, if that money is not available in that sub-pocket of money, to reach out and, and use his discretion to make sure? Listen, this has to happen, folks. This has to happen. We need to have this master traffic plan to move forward. This has to happen. We need to find a way to do it. I'm just saying that if there is, if there is dollar amounts that need to be addressed here, which there will be, does the city manager have in his discretion to make this happen? We're saying we need it, make it happen.
Mr. Mayor?
City Manager?
Okay. The reason I didn't, I heard the first part of your question, I was, I was conferring with the city attorney...
Okay.
...to check on what the language was when the voter approved the commission auditor. I don't know if he has that answer, but, um, the commission auditor, from time to time, when commission has come up with a project, just like we have a city budget, they can readjust the priority and bring it back to you as to what items are important to do, if they were gonna defer one that you had to a future time. So, I do believe that, uh, certainly could occur, and they have come before you, and when they bring their, uh, presentation to you, uh, they will indicate to you how much they're allocating for each project. Uh, I don't know if Sam has that answer that I just...
Point of clarification?
Okay, hold on a second. I'm gonna say, I need to say something about the amendment. Uh, I'm not gonna support the amendment. I think that we need to do this quickly. We have the staff to hire a city engineer. What do we wanna continue to get all with other people? I wanna get it done now, folks.
Point of clarification?
Commissioner Castillo, I'm spoke, I'm speaking, please.
I'm making a...
You've spoken many times.
I, 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 I...
I might give a point of appreciation, I might... I'm not gonna support the amendment, as I stated.
Okay.
Because I want, I think this item in itself is the way to go and get it done quickly. Okay, that's my point.
Point of clarification?
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very much. Mayor, I hope that you, I hope that you will listen to the point of clarification before you make up your mind, because it'll help you to understand it.
I don't need any help, Commissioner, but thank you.
Okay, I think this will provide you with some help, anyway. When, when, when Vice Mayor asked me, asked us, or made the comment, what, uh, you know, wh, what monies would the commission auditor do in order to perform this function? I thought he was asking, with what funds would he actually perform the duty of hiring this, or the cost associated with the hiring? We have never imposed on the city commission budget to pay for a special project. That, if, this, the, the, this motion in particular here, before the, the city, uh, um, uh, auditor suggestion was raised, would have to come either out of reserves or out of some other, uh, 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 city, uh, source of funds, because it's not budgeted. This is an emerging issue. So, we have to separate the two questions, and maybe I misunderstood, uh, Vice Mayor's question. The war, my motion is simply to ask, for the purposes of making sure that the report is independent and unimpeachable in that sense, is to ask our city auditor to hire the firm pursuant, following the, the laws necessary to hire the firm. The city will pay for that firm's retainer to do the scope of work. The city can actually in, in educate what the scope of work should be, working with the, uh, with the, uh, okay? Sorry, I, I, I hear, I hear, I hear. But I never suggested, "Let's take the fee for the engineer out of the auditing budget."
All right, on the amendment.
That wasn't my, uh, cons, concept either.
Right.
The concept, the concept was, what is the city auditor going to charge to perform the service?
Right.
Not pay for the engineer. That was never my, my...
Well, forming the service, I'm...
Ronny amendment.
Mayor, can I, Mayor, can I ask you, can I ask you a question?
City Clerk. Stand by.
Read the amendment, please.
Read the amendment, please.
Commissioner Castillo, seconded by Commissioner Schwartz, made an amendment to include direction to the city auditor to allow CNA, CCNA process in selecting an independent engineering firm to enter into a contract with the vendor and bring vendor back to us.
Does everybody understand the amendment? Okay, call a roll on the amendment.
Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's ca, who's asking?
City Manager.
City Manager?
I would like the city attorney to make a comment regarding the charter amendment that was passed regarding this issue.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, if you'll permit me, but, uh, my recollection in that of Jacob Horowitz, because we actually wrote the charter question, it was considered by the commission, put it on by the electorate of the city, um, it was the engagement of, and the creation of the position of the city commission auditor, the commission auditor. The reference to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was in the budget fiscal impact statement that was on the ballot, but it wasn't part of the question, it was just required by disclosure that suggested that was the proposed budgeting amount.
Then?
Then, that's correct, then.
Then, please don't interrupt. Say it, attorney.
But from the standpoint of, of, of the legality of it, there's a ballot title and there's a ballot question. This is in the budget impact statement that was requested by the commission that it would be $250,000. And, and that's, that's been what it has been over the past number of years.
All right.
But in the context of your decision to go elsewhere financially, that's certainly a prerogative of the commission, given the circumstances of the situation.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Everybody understand the amendment? I have a question for the city attorney.
Sir?
I have a question for the city attorney.
Quickly, please.
City Attorney, uh, Mayor Ordus, uh, raised a very valid point as to why he doesn't want to support the amendment, which made me start thinking, how would the commission auditor be bound to the CCNA process to legally publish it? Right? Versus, uh, the city commission, and if we can, under state law, say that a traffic engineer, uh, shall not have worked in the South Florida area and only those outside the South Florida area can apply? Certainly that accomplishes the same thing without jamming up, um, you know, even more delay.
Good.
All right, so can, can you, can you weigh in on that?
The, the, the statute that I referred to, which is the Consultants' Competitive Negotiations Act, it doesn't provide a mechanism to discriminate against who you hire, number one. Because it's how, how, how you, you're requesting qualifications for people to perform a service for you. Um, you are performing, you're, you're, that's what you're requesting. You're performing services. So if the question is whether or not the consultant can act under the statute, they'd have to be schooled in the statute and understand how to implement it.
Right.
That they'd have to talk that process unless they know how to do it.
So is the city commission prohibited from writing a, um, an RFP that excludes anyone who's worked in South Florida?
I would have some concerns about such a, such a restriction or regulation.
So if there's, if there is a concern about a, uh, a consultant who may have done work in Pembroke Pines or knows somebody who did and they don't want to throw somebody under the bus, how, how does, how does the public get what we're looking for, which is basically, um, a, a, a fair look of what we got going on here? I think that's what we're trying to get done here, right? We don't want someone covering for somebody.
Do you need an answer from the city attorney? Do you need an answer?
Yeah, I'm looking for an answer.
That's a policy consideration the commission has to consider in, in this engagement. I can't answer the question as a legal answer. The answer is you're looking to hire someone who's competent, qualified to perform a, 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 a function that's by statute required to be followed the statute.
Okay, so, so we have the policy, so we have the policy flexibility of picking who we want, right?
Well, remember, under the county ethics code, you can't be, you can't be the select, you can't make those decisions.
I, I know that, sir. I'm saying the administration's going to come back with, with the selection committee.
If you choose to have the staff do it, that's correct.
And that's a policy decision.
Of the city commission.
My original motion is to instruct the city administration to hire a traffic engineering consultant. And then we got off of that. That was my original motion.
Didn't get off of it.
Where it's going to.
We made an amendment.
Excuse me. Where it's going to more quickly happen instead of jumping through all of these hoops to try to do other things.
There's nothing faster than the first thing.
What we're doing now.
Folks.
Nothing faster.
Folks, we're prof, we're professionals here. City Clerk, call a roll on the amendment.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Vice Mayor Good?
No.
Commissioner Seifel?
No.
Mayor Ordus?
No.
Motion failed.
Okay, we are on item 21. City Clerk, call a roll on item 21, please.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Thank you. On item 22 now.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Castillo.
This is a motion to discuss and take possible action directing the city to purchase and install gate systems for 208 and 4th and another for 200, for 4th and 202nd, and to provide all resident car stickers to use the gates plus installation of a call-in phone system for visitors and a security camera system to ensure enforcement, install a three-way stop sign intersection at 208 and 4th, and turning lanes added to the city. The city to finance installation and maintain said assets as an emergency hardship measure to protect life safety and of the affected resident communities. I am bringing this item up.
Is there a second?
Uh, commission item doesn't require a second. We're in discussion.
You made a motion.
This is a motion to discuss.
City Attorney?
It's a motion to discuss, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's go on discussing.
Uh, okay, so there are certain things that can't wait. And, um, those of us who are familiar with, uh, with this particular community know that they have had this issue of, uh, of, uh, school-related traffic going through their community to a much greater extent than any other. The point doesn't have to be made already. Uh, uh, we, we ourselves, as the city commission, at the last time that we met, declared that they are in a special hardship situation. And we communicated that to the county, not only that they're in a special hardship situation, but that we might need to, that we're, we're, we're looking to close 4th Street. We did not say city attorney between what and what. 4th Street is pretty long. But, uh, we're talking about between 202 Avenue and 208 Avenue. I have listened very, very carefully to what the residents have had to say from this community. They are very, very concerned that children will be hit by cars. They are very, very concerned that ambulances can't get down the block. They are very, very concerned about the, the livability of their, of, of their community. Day after day after day after day. Endless traffic down that air, uh, avenue, keeping them from being able to enjoy, uh, any reasonable semblance of, of community living during those hours. In, in, in years past, we have made numerous attempts, I know I have, with county traffic engineering, asking for, uh, co, traffic calming devices, asking for three-way stop signs, asking for all different kinds of things. And the answer has been no, no, no. Now, we have this current emergency, which we know, and some residents disagree, but we know because we asked the parents, is, it involves COVID. It involves COVID because parents are very, very concerned right now about the health of their children and they're transporting them to much greater degrees than ever before, one at a time per car. We know this because we, we speak to the parents. It's added an additional layer to the traffic woes our city has to deal with citywide. It's not just in that area. It's citywide. And it's not just in this city. It's most every city. However, in that particular street, no, there, I, I dare say there is in another residential street in Pembroke Pines that has to deal with what 4th, between 202 and 208 have to deal with. Now, I've listened very, very carefully to what residents have to say, and there's no shortage of suggestions. Some want to put a gate right in the middle of the street. So somewhere, somewhere just, I would say, east of the, of, of Dimensions and, uh, Chapel, uh, Point, excuse me, I'm sorry, Chapel Point. But there are three, the problem is there are three communities that share, uh, um, Northwest 4th Street as their exit. And if we went back in time, it's quite possible that events would have been different. And that would have been a gated community all along. It's sort of set up for it where they could have been a gate at 4th, uh, and 202, located there, and there could have been another one in the back. And residents would have all along had their choice, just as they've had up until now, of which exit they wanted to, uh, entrance from. There are some in the preserve, uh, excuse me, in, uh, in Pasadena that want the, that want the road blocked there. But in my discussions with, uh, with staff, they've told me that creates a problem for trucks. It becomes, it, it becomes a U-turn problem. It, it's, it's just not a way to deal with this. Additionally, the, 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 the two other communities, uh, Chapel Point and also Dimensions, they want to be able to, to go in, in either direction. One resident made a great suggestion, which said, if you're going to gate this community off, because there's really no other alternative if you want to control traffic during the school hours, just do it during the school hours. In other words, put, put the gates so that the, the gate arms are up, uh, away from the morning rush and away from the afternoon rush. They'll work during the morning rush. They won't work during the after, the afternoon, uh, during the non-school hours, let's say, non, non-school pickup or drop-off hours. That's certainly an option. Here's what, in my opinion, is not an option, is waiting. When this issue came up just a week or so ago, when we were assembled here as the city commission, there were comments from this very day, it's, Mr. Dodge, I want to see this done tomorrow. I want to see this road closed tomorrow, Mr. Dodge. We can't wait anymore. Guess what? The intent of that was, 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 was appropriate. What, what that intended to do was to be responsive to the needs of this particular community. I share that urgency. We have now gotten to the point where that, where the livability of that community has been removed by this crisis of traffic and it can't continue. So I'm all for hiring engineers. I'm all for the long-term master planning. I'm all for sitting down and figuring out this, these, these road delay, project delays and getting them done. We finally defined what a, uh, um, what a lack agreement is and isn't. And, uh, I leave it to staff to sit down with people and figure it out so that we can get these things moving and moving fast. But 202 to 208 on, on 4th needs some help right away. This will cost the city some money. And some will say this sets a precedent, but actually it doesn't. You see, we passed a resolution the last time we met that declared that in this city, we have a traffic emergency, a hardship, that allows us to take certain steps that the law allows when we make that declaration. So it's not like everybody can come in and say, hey, I want to gate two. Hey, I want to gate two. No, we're, we're not having to run on gates. It has to be justified. Closing any road, any public road and depriving all of the citizens who pay for it from being able to use it, that's a serious thing. That's a thing that typically in Pembroke Pines and good government cities, they don't do. But sometimes the exception is necessary to the rule. And in my opinion, Northwest 4th between 202 and 208 is an exception to the rule. We can't delay. This has to happen. And so I'm bringing this item forward. We can talk about how to do it. We can, I'm not talking about beautiful iron gates. I hope, I hope you didn't have that in your mind. I'm talking about a gate arm that is sufficient to keep, keep people from being able to intrude there. I'm talking about limiting through traffic in that community during these hours. Posting cops, way too expensive over the long run. And let me tell you something. We just made a vote. Uh, this is going to take months to get this engineered. Months. Don't think that this is, this stuff happens tomorrow. Some of it can, and we shouldn't wait. This is a common sense thing that shouldn't wait. It does not set a precedent and it solves the problem in a way that everybody can live with. It might not be your favorite way to solve the problem, but it sure as hell solves it and it can solve it quickly and everybody can live with it. So that's my motion.
Fair discussion, item 22.
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you so much. We just heard a, a lot. We just, we just heard a whole, a whole lot. And, and I have some comments, obviously, uh, about this. Um, since we just passed my motion, item 21, which was for direction to administration to proceed with hiring a traffic consultant and creating a master traffic plan, which that will take some time because it will take a lot of review because it's a citywide project, in order to provide some immediate relief to not only the traffic issue on 4th Street, but also, and this is important, but also the health and safety issue surrounding traffic on 202 Avenue and 208 Avenue since the concern most expressed by residents was the morning drop-off traffic issue. I have structured this substitute motion, which I'm going to make, to only address that timeframe, but it could easily be changed to include the afternoon time if requested. My motion is similar to a prior item, but is much more streamlined and provides fair and equal relief for the three communities that are most affected. So this is my substitute motion, so I want you to listen.
Commissioner, Commissioner Seifel?
Yes, Mayor.
There's no motion on the floor.
I made a motion.
The only motion was to discuss.
My colleague insisted he made a motion, Mayor, so I am making a substitute motion.
I didn't hear a motion. I didn't get a second. So Commissioner Seifel, you have the floor.
Well, then I'm not making a substitute motion. If there was no second, I'm making a motion then.
He didn't ask for a second.
You, you're, City Attorney. City Attorney.
I'm sorry.
I asked you before, it was a motion to discuss, and we had that. So now Commissioner Seifel wants to put a motion on the floor. Am I in, okay with that?
The, the item was discussed by Commissioner Castillo.
Right.
Um, there's nothing on the floor requir, requiring implementation of that particular item.
I made a motion on my item.
Commissioner Seifel, you have the floor. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, am I making?
You can ignore the motion and not ask for a second.
Commissioner Seifel, you have the floor.
Mayor, I'd like to clarify if, if my colleague had a motion or was he just having a discussion?
Motion to discuss.
I made, I made a motion. I made a.
City Attorney.
A discussion, Commissioner Seifel, and then I made a motion. I'm waiting for someone to second my motion. And then you can make your substitute motion. Let's do it the right way.
I'll run this commission the right way.
Mr. Mayor, if I can quickly.
You keep waiting.
The commissioner sought to discuss the item, which he did, and he also made an offering of a motion to implement it.
And did that motion get a second to it?
No, because I didn't. Waiting for someone to second.
Nobody did, so I'm moving on.
Okay.
I'm making.
So, so to be clear, my motion was not seconded.
I'm not making a substitute motion because that wasn't a motion out there. I'm making a motion at this point. My motion is, and I want you to listen carefully to this, please. Place traffic arms north and south sides of Northwest 4th Street at the 202 Avenue Monument Sign location. That will, that will not allow westbound traffic on Northwest 4th Street from 7:00 to 8:30 a.m., Monday through Friday. Also place traffic arms at Northwest 4th Street at 208 Avenue that will not allow eastbound traffic on Northwest 4th Street from 7:00 to 8:30 a.m., Monday through Friday. Residents will be given barcode stickers for their cars that will enable them to enter the community if necessary during the 7:00 to 8:30 a.m. timeframe when the arms are down. These arms will be in the open position all day and night except for these designated timeframes because you all have indicated that your issues are morning drop-off, afternoon, not as much, but afternoon as well. The rest of the day, it's not an issue and therefore shouldn't have to be, uh, something dealt with. Since it will take some time for these gates to be installed, although I'm hoping not terribly long because we're going to be pushing for it, and since this is a very serious health and safety issue, I am requesting that immediate signage and visible enforcement be at these two locations, ensuring no through traffic during these morning timeframes until the gate arms are installed and functional.
Second.
That is my motion for you all.
It's essentially what, essentially the thing that I want.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Uh, audience, you've been here patiently.
Mayor, if I may.
Audience, you've been here patiently. Would you like to make a comment on this motion? Three-minute limit, and so please don't repeat yourself with all, but I'm going to ask for somebody to come up first. I need to have, why are you laughing at me? Uh, okay, uh, and then whoever wants to come, you'll have three minutes. Okay, Ms. Sumby, you have three minutes. I need your name and address for the record, please. No, speak. No, no, hit the, yeah, there you go.
Lisa Sumby, 4th Street.
All right.
Okay, first, I would like to thank Commissioner Seifel for the time that she spent researching this. Her and I sat in traffic jams, morning jams, afternoon jams. We've gone round and round. We've walked the area where the gate should be. We've walked the area where the gate couldn't be. She put a lot of time and a lot of effort into this, and I do want to thank her. Um, as far as the arms, Pasadena State, we're very happy with the arms being down in the mornings so that there's no traffic, um, in the afternoons. We would like it because there is some, in the afternoons, we get more of the kids that are leaving school, that are speeding up and down the street. So if the arms can be, you know, in morning and afternoon, that would be perfect. So again, I would just like to thank the commission. I would like to thank Commissioner Seifel. And, uh, I appreciate all the. I would like to thank Commissioner Siple, and I appreciate all the done.
Thank you, Ms. Sumby. Next? Need your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Knapp, one nine nine one one, Northwest Fourth Street, between one ninety-six and two oh two. Here's the problem. I hear a lot of my fellow neighbors in one, Gail, and she's in two. Everybody is coming off of Plains Boulevard, going at one ninety-six to Fourth Street. Gail personally counted a hundred and forty cars from fifteen to seven to seven thirty. A hundred and forty cars coming down Fourth Street. So I don't want to exclude the Pasadena two. It's very important that we also look at what's going into Pasadena one is coming mostly out of Pasadena two, because they can't get to two oh two to be able to make that left, right, and then left into two oh two. They're coming through at one ninety-six. I've been complaining, I've been a resident of this community for ten years, east another ten years, and I've complained about Fourth Street, and Mr. Castillo and I talked about gates, then humps in the street to stop the speeding, and I would like to see something done with Pasadena two. And we were at the Home Owners Association meeting yesterday, and they all agreed that it's a problem that needs to be addressed as well.
Can I respond, Mayor?
Hold on, and thank you for that. Years ago, I can't remember how many, but Ms. Sumby came up to this commission and said, people are cutting through Fourth Street instead of going all the way around. We put speed humps on Fourth Street.
Right.
Years ago.
Right.
And we acted quickly, correct, Ms. Sumby?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Siple.
I was just gonna say, again, this is, this whole traffic initiative, as I've said many times, is, it's big, because it affects somebody different communities. And we're, you know, the old saying, how do you eat the elephant one bite at a time? It's not that we're not looking at other, you know, others. We're starting, we're trying to do it so we can manage and move management, you know, and do that. And that's what this whole master traffic plan is going to help us with as well, to look at the best overall way to not have Band-Aid or knee-jerk reactions to these things, but to really find some good, solid, logical explanations and fixes for all of these issues. So I'd be more than happy to continue having discussion with you, and I'll be out in your community looking around. Certainly, I was, actually, I was there yesterday and rode around a little bit, but-
What's gonna happen when these gates do go up, it's gonna wreck two.
We're gonna discuss.
Well, I'm not sure of that.
So, I feel that that's gonna be, and I have two kids, two small kids, and in the morning time, if they're out, I can't even get out of my house in order to go today.
At least thank you for your comment. We're gonna move on this one quickly, and we're gonna get everybody's opinion, and we're gonna do it right. Okay, next speaker, anybody else? Yes, combine down, please. Name and address for the record. No, it's not okay, gotta have the name and address.
Christine O'Farrell, two zero three, eight zero, Northwest Fourth Street. I'm in Pasadena one. And thank you so much, all of you, really, for patiently listening to us for years. We have the same conversations for years. And so, finally, we've gotten to the stage where we're talking about looking for solutions for our individual communities. But what we don't look at at all, and Iris, thank you for the analogy, is the two-ton elephant in the room, and that's Somerset, okay? It's Somerset in the warehouses, and now Somerset across the avenue. The problem stems from there. Yes, I know we have a whole bunch of other problems all around our community of traffic. I realize that. But the root of our problem stems from there. We can put patches all over the city, but if we don't take care of the two-ton elephant, it continues to grow, because we let it, okay? We do let it continue to grow, and we're not fixing the problem. We're putting patches on all over the place. That's all we're doing, is putting patches, at our expense, not theirs. And I believe if you cause the problem, you should pay for the problem.
You're right.
You should be part of the solution, not quietly sitting in the back of the room, providing nothing to the solution. And that's what's been happening for as long as I've been a resident in the city.
And let me just, if I might.
If you may.
We realized that with Somerset, we had a town hall meeting out west with Somerset, and we concluded that they needed buses. And we concluded that they had to park the buses two miles down. The parents would bring them to the buses and to alleviate traffic. They agreed to that. Somerset is the key in this, and they know it, and this commission knows it. I guarantee you, and I'm promising you, this commission knows about it, and they'll be part of the fix.
I'm glad to hear that, and I will hold you to that, sir.
Please do.
I will, thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Was that it on the floor? Okay, who, oh, hello?
May I?
Go ahead.
Yes, please. Commissioner Siple, this is how you say it.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
What should I do?
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Okay, please bear with me.
Welcome to live TV, go ahead.
Commissioner Siple, I would-
Yeah, to speak into the mic, I'm sorry.
You may.
Because we're being recorded on that. There you go.
Okay, I would like to thank you for, first of all, my address. I live in Chapel Point, seven six zero, northwest two oh seven terrace. I was not at your meetings before, and I don't know what has been said before, but as the gentlemen present the plan, that's what comes when a city is growing, when its community is growing, because you're going to have more traffic. Okay, to go, to get to the point, okay, before that, I didn't hear Chapel Point was included in your plan. So I thank you so much for including us, because by excluded, by excluded Dimension and Chapel A Point, that was not going to solve the problem. So you're including all, yeah, you're including all three of us. But to go further, putting the arms is something since temporary. We might need to put signs, no true traffic, and found different way to solve it, because this going, not only going to cost the community money, because every time the arms is broken, that's going to cost money, no one, okay? The best thing was to change the signs, and until the traffic, until it becomes like a private road instead of for public road, is as being listed, it seems like mostly that becomes about three years ago. That's starting to be that sentence.
Mayor, could I respond to her?
Yes, Commissioner Siple.
Thank you. The master traffic plan that I've asked for will address citywide where there are issues as, where it makes sense to make permanent changes, like what maybe you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
The, what I've asked for tonight with the arms, and prior to the arms being put up, to actually have signage and enforcement there for more immediate until that can happen, is exactly what you're saying, is to give something more immediately, and the arms is not a permanent, no, it's not, but it's giving you relief
Yeah, for now.
until we can get this master traffic plan where the expert can tell us what is the best way to handle it on a more permanent basis. Okay?
I would like to come to your next meetings and talk more about it.
We'd love to have you. Okay, further discussion on the floor?
Yes, Mayor.
For, City Manager.
Yes, I would like for you to also include that you would waive our procurement process for procuring arms installation, because without that, as you know, it would take several months to get this going.
Commission without objection, without objection, City Manager.
Is that without objection?
Without objection, okay. All right, we're now on the time-
Mayor, can I be recognized, please?
Commissioner Schwartz, quickly, on the motion.
Okay, normally, before we go out to the public, five of us get to speak at least once.
I had a reason for doing this.
I'm sure you did, sir.
I did.
Okay, so one of our residents mentioned who should be paying for this. Mr. Dodge?
Yes, I heard that.
Do you have the, do you have the address to where we're gonna send that bill to?
Your house. Just kidding, just kidding.
Yes, she lives in, uh-
Yeah, so I've had a discussion with the representative of Somerset. I gave them the better part of a week to fulfill my requests. I told them that if they can't keep their parents off of Fourth Street, that things aren't just gonna work out so good. There are site plan requirements that need to be fulfilled. And certainly, we need to make sure that they're doing everything that they're supposed to do. But however, folks, I received an email from the representative for Somerset a few hours before the meeting, and they sent out a robocall and an email telling their parents to stay out of the neighborhoods.
Good.
Greetings Somerset families, we would like to remind our families of the importance of using either two hundred and eighth Avenue or Johnson Street for the arrival and dismissal of our students. Safety of our students and staff and neighboring residents is our top priority during traffic operations. Please be reminded that you cannot use, and they bold-faced, cannot use any neighboring association as a drop-off or pickup location for your child. Please be reminded that Northwest Fourth Street is not to be utilized or entered by our Somerset families. It's always our goal to maintain a great working relationship with our neighbors and our city, and we look forward to your cooperation and working together to ensure traffic pattern situations improved.
Great, great job.
So that's a good first start. There have been meetings with city administration and Somerset over the last several days. I've spoken with police chief and our fire chief and our city manager. There is a cost to a traffic study, there is a cost to arms, there's a cost to waiving procurement, but there, those are all collateral damage to what the actual cause is, and that's just non-compliance. So right now, Somerset is running at about thirty-one percent bus ridership. And two weeks ago, I said, I'm still waiting for numbers from Broward County School Board, and we still don't have those numbers. And we also don't have a solution for Wes Broward, and the folks in Holly Lake are getting jammed every day. Okay? We need the Broward County School Board, City Manager, to please come to the table and do something. It's enough. It's absolutely enough. It's now nine thirty at night, that's three hours of some lives that can't be gotten back. They'd rather not be here, shouldn't have to be here. Okay, so here's the deal. We have a commitment from Somerset. I anticipate a behavioral change is coming. If they, if they do not modify their traffic patterns and how their buses, even if they have buses, how the buses come in to solve this issue, we need to know daily if there's a lack of compliance. We certainly can have our police do traffic enforcement, but there's constitutional rights to drive on the public road, okay? And you can't be stopped by the police unless you're doing something wrong. And driving on a public road isn't doing anything wrong. Okay, so there's a legal challenge. The gates, I hope it's not the ones we have, Mr. Dodge, right out here. I hope-
Commissioner, I think we're gonna do this right.
Well, no, I'm just saying, look, I'm just leveling with them. I'm leveling with them, okay? We have, we have equipment that the city owns that does not function.
We'll make it function.
I know we will, sir, I'm just saying, look.
And the point is what?
The point is, is that we're gonna try our best.
Okay.
We're gonna try our best, but please, let's not, what I've seen over the last four to six weeks is a community just absolutely at each other. Angry, it's divisive, the, 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 the things you're seeing on social media that are just ripping this community apart, it has to stop.
Okay.
It does, Mayor.
I know.
Vice Mayor Good and I, we're happy to support our colleagues trying to resolve an issue, okay? We're happy to do that, I know, Mayor, you're happy to do it as well. Okay, but, but we need, we need, we need some accountability and some commitments.
It's coming.
So if there's anybody on Fourth who's at the driveway, I'm just saying, they said, don't take, don't say, don't break the law. I'm just saying, if there's, you know, if there's, if there's a little bit of, I could see two gates going down, right?
All right, all right, all right.
Two gates going down, but there's a gate that's open.
We still have a long agenda, we've gotta keep going.
We see it all the time.
Got your point.
They're already driving down the wrong side of the street. What's gonna prevent them from going down the wrong side of the street to avoid the gate?
We're gonna fix it, all right.
Both sides are closed.
We're gonna fix it. Ma'am, that spoke?
All right, let's do it.
Miss that spoke? Yeah, was that fast enough? Somerset, we're gonna take care of it. Did you want to speak? Okay. First, you gotta go, turn the mic on. Then you gotta give us your name and address.
I'm at Northwest two hundred and seventh Avenue, Pembroke Pines, Florida.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm here to kind of represent all the neighbors in all three neighborhoods, because I have friends with all three neighborhoods. And I have a new president right here, and a new vice president, and one-
Congratulations.
I'm very excited, because I get so happy, because y'all are important. But my whole concern basically is that, I've been here for thirty years, I've walked through all the neighborhoods. When I started here, all the gossip and all the crap, I was like, no, this is not acceptable. Thank you, thank you, and you're awesome. Thank you, guys, I know you from all the towns. And this guy happened, but you guys have to really move on. Because a lot of matters are still happening, so.
Yeah, you have a commitment. You have our commitment. Mr. President?
Mayor, more?
Hold on, let me hear it from the president.
Oh, Vice, sorry.
Name and address for the record.
Uh, one twenty, Northwest two oh seventh way. I just wanted to add to yours. I noticed the last two days, I normally leave, quarter to seven, seven. Last two days, Somerset, I thought they were closed.
Yeah.
Something changed.
You know, they got the message.
So something, something is occurring, and it may work itself out, hopefully.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Siple, then we're gonna move on to the item.
There's a couple more people.
Did you have something, I'm sorry? I asked, does anybody, does anybody else, so I don't offend anybody? Okay, you'd be our last speaker.
Oh, goodness. Hi, Lisa Wolf, five three zero, Northwest two hundred and fifth Avenue. I live in Chapel Point. I moved to Pembroke Pines three years ago for the schools, so thank you very much for everything you do do to approve the schools and support the schools. Yes, with the group over there. But I do want to say that I also chose Chapel Point to not be a gated community. So while I understand this approach, and I want to respect everything we need to do for everyone in all three communities, please keep that in mind, and I think the traffic impact is what's most important. Thank you very much for doing that, because that will really give us the best results. I'm already concerned of how are we gonna get things during that timeframe while it's closed, and how are the buses gonna get in, and all those other things. But I'll leave that to you, I just wanted to share my personal perspective. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, great discussion, great discussion. So City Clerk, call the roll, please, on the motion and state.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Thank you, thank you all for your patience, thank you. All right, Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor Good, we're on your item number twelve. Thank you all for your patience. Oh, boy, I gotta get, I gotta print. I gotta print.
Thank you very much.
Oh, okay. You want to reset first?
Okay.
You want to reset?
Bye-bye, thank you so much.
Okay, give us a couple minutes. I take pills for that, too.
Are we taking a break or a session?
No, I'm just waiting for them to go out, I just, I'm gonna get up and stretch. All right, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So motion to approve the findings and recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and to award RFQ number RE dash twenty-one dash oh three, Design Bill Services for renovation of Spring Valley Park and William B. Armstrong Park to MBR Construction Incorporated, and to direct the city manager to negotiate a contract for services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Siple, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So I do want to ask if there's- So, uh, I, I do want to ask if there's a presentation on this item, I did ask the City Manager.
Yes, uh, Christine will make, uh, the presentation as she requested.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission, Christina Sorensen, Director of Recreation and Cultural Arts. I'd like this quick, um, I was asked to just do a quick presentation on the project and what it is. Um, this is the Spring Valley Park and Dream Park renovation. This was brought to commission a couple months ago as a design bill, design criteria package, and, um, we hired Manny in two thousand and eighteen to create a design criteria package. The first phase was supposed to be for the Dream Park, which you see here, um, and it was to create a recreation center for this place, space. We finished the design criteria package, we brought it to commission, and commission asked us to take a second look at it and incorporate more of the park to include the hockey rings as an element. So, what I'm showing you here, this is the park as it is today with the hockey rings and the Dream Park, um, as you can see on the Dream Park, there's, there used to be a lot more tree canopy, that was all destroyed by Hurricane Irma back in twenty seventeen. This is the dream cent, the recreation center, this is just an overlay of what it's supposed to look like over top of it, um, Manny did this rendering for us, and then you can see in the little white area, this is the actual, um, design that he has created with an overlay for the new recreation center. And then I just included some of the renderings that were provided to us, um, a few different images from different angles of what the project could look like, and these were some of the components that we had just looked at to be included inside to give it a rustic look in this park, we thought it would look well with the, uh, the canopy that's there, the tree canopy. And this is just a layout of what it would look like for a banquet setting inside, and then some building elevations from the different points of view, I didn't include the back 'cause it was just a plain wall. Again, back to the first picture, so you can see again, the other side of, the other component of the project was the hockey rings, renovating the hockey rings and turning them to a passive area, and so this is the project that we've looked at now, laying it over the hockey rings to show a walking path, this black area over here is actually a playground that I'll show a little bit more in depth. We are keeping the existing restrooms that are there, and, um, we're just going to build around them. Again, this is just showing it in relation to the parking lot, all of the parking lot will remain, we're not touching the parking lot at all, and this is just zooming in a little bit on that same picture. A lot more tree canopy, uh, again, a lot of walking spaces, benches, some exercise equipment along the walking path, and then the playground, and this is just zooming in on the playground a little bit, and then here are some renderings of what that playground would look like in that area. And this, this area on the west side of Dykes does not have a playground, so there is one in Towngate, but, and the people in the Spring Valley community, and the, they don't have an area to go. And then the other question that was asked of me was to just give an overview of the design criteria, the design-build team that was recommended by the Evaluation Committee, and, uh, the prime is gonna be MBR Construction, and he has developed a, a suite of people that are going to be working with him, his architect being Wa- Walters, Zakaria and Associates, and then that architect is going to be hiring a landscape architect, which is Cavendish Adano, some civil landscaping through SS and Engineering, uh, Said, Said Ella, I can never pronounce that name, for engineering, and then, of course, Bidworth Design, so that's the team that he put together, and, um, that was what was evaluated by the committee and recommended to this commission. And, that was it.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um, can you leave that slide there, right there?
You want this last slide?
Yeah.
Sure.
That's fine. So, it just kinda helps me, uh, talk about some of the things. So, uh, first and foremost, please, I support this project. So, don't misrep, don't allow me to, to misunderstand what I'm going to say as anything against this project, because I am in full support of this project. Otherwise, I would've voted differently when we asked for it to go forward with the design criteria package. Um, and so, all, everything that we saw in this presentation was renderings, it's not what's gonna go there necessarily, because it hasn't been designed, these are conceptuals, these are ideas that we gave to the, the group of people who made the, uh, who submitted proposals for the RFQ, right? This is Request for Qualifications, correct?
Correct.
This was design criteria package was given to them, saying, "This is essentially about what we want, and then what we're asking you all to do is submit, you know, your qualifications to us, saying that you're qualified to do it." So, probably what happened was you had, I think you had, uh, at least four companies that submitted for this project in the RFQ process, is that correct?
There was four companies that we evaluated as a committee.
Okay, four companies that you evaluated, and each company probably had a team looking like this, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's, uh, so we're, we're talking about a design-build project, quite different than the design-bid-build, which is typically something like we would have, uh, the Sinofsky Group do a design, they would have a set of plans prepared, um, they would, they're permissible, then you go out, and then you get a contractor, and then the contractor, you know, builds, and the con, you know, and so we sort of kinda know what's going on in that process, particularly, um, when it comes to what it's gonna cost us. So, here, uh, in a design-build process, basically, uh, best practices is that, you know, you go through the RFQ process, which is what we did here.
Mm-hmm.
And in best practices, what you do is you shortlist your qualifications, people who are qualified to do it. Uh, then you go out to an RFP, and the only people who can bid on the RFP is the people that got shortlisted or qualified to bid. Now, what's the difference between the RFQ and the RFP? Well, the RFP gets a little bit more into details of what it is they're going to provide, we, we, we get to see really what they're going to do, uh, and the most important thing is, is we get a price, and they get, and it's a guaranteed maximum price, meaning, that's it, whatever happens, if it's wrong, I mean, something happens in that construction process, design process, whatever, that's it, you're guaranteeing us it's not gonna cost us anymore. So, in this process here, what's, what we're asking, what we're being asked to do is, we're being asked to just go right from the RFQ to authorizing the City Manager to negotiate a contract, and we're approving this without even knowing what the price is. That's what this item says, tonight, that's what it says, award this, and then if you take a look on the page where it says, "The Financial Impact Details," there is no dollar value there.
Vice Mayor?
Just says that there's money there.
Who's that?
It, it, this doesn't say for any, any value.
Who's that?
Christina had a phone.
May?
Point of information, Commissioner Castillo.
Can, can we just get a quick answer to that assertion? Is there a cost associated with this, or a price?
It'll come to you. What we're asking for you to do today is approve the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and direct the Manager to negotiate a contract, to come back to you with a guaranteed maximum price for this project. If we cannot reach an agreement, then the, the RFQ states that we will go to the next vendor, and if, um, City Attorney, if you can correct me, I think we chose this as a qualification-based selection process according to CCNA, and that's the process that we're following. We will be bringing back a contract, and we won't do anything until we get your approval with the guaranteed maximum price.
All right, Vice Mayor?
So, we're not, so this is not awarding the contract, this is-
Yes, sir.
-approving the ranking, allowing the City Manager to go and, okay.
Yes.
So, then, I think that we need to take the award word out of the preamble, because that's exactly what it says.
City Manager, is that a-
Well, I think the award, and we can look at that, the award they're talking about is to this firm.
I, I'm, I, I got it.
Okay.
The word, trust me, it's a specific meaning, and the attorney can, can deny, or, or he can tell you whatever, but I know that word means in the preamble. You're asking us to award that RFQ, and, uh, that's the only issue that I have. So, I mean, I'd rather see this go to an RFP, I'd rather see other companies, you know, that, that were qualified, bid on it, so that we can see what the pricing would be, the competition, that's the competitive piece of this, but, I mean, you know, if my colleagues just wanna go right to a, a negotiated contract, I'm willing to do that, but I can't, I, I don't want to award a contract until it comes before us with a guaranteed maximum price.
Understood.
City, uh, City Attorney?
It, I think that Christina properly described the fact that it's subject to negotiation.
Right.
It's, it's, it's essentially accepting the ranking, the-
And that's the understanding, I think.
Accepting the ranking, the recommendation, subject to negotiation.
I agree with the Vice Mayor.
It doesn't say subject to, it just says direct the City Manager to negotiate.
Well, then, I think, I, I think we should modify the, the motion to reflect that's the intent.
So, move-
So, it's clear.
Make the intent, uh, the intent be that it's a negotiation, City Manager to negotiate and come back to us, and if we don't like it, we're not happy with it, then our process is then we would go to the next, the next bidder down.
All right, how about motion by Commissioner Castillo, is there a second?
Before we, before we go there, can we ask the attorney if that's how that works?
Well-
In a design bid process?
No, it doesn't.
Do you go to the second bidder, or it's done?
We, we've done this previously, where we've, the commission has selected someone, we've attempted to negotiate with the first selected, uh, company, we could not reach an agreement, then we went to the second one.
The next one.
And then if we get to a point that we can't-
In a design-build process?
In a design build.
I, I know that you do that typically.
Yeah, in the design build process.
In RFQ process, but, yeah, I know.
All right, before we, I gotta, I have a motion by Commissioner Castillo, is there a second?
Well, what's the motion?
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo, again.
Motion is to clarify the motion that it's gonna be a negotiated contract, uh, a negotiation for the contract, and it will come back to us with a price.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner.
I, I'd like to make a substitute motion to that.
You can make an amendment.
Yeah, well, the amendment would just basically, to change the language, to accept the, the ranking of, of the process and allow the City Managers to negotiate a contract.
City Attorney, is that-
Subject to negotiation by the Manager.
Subject to negotiation.
Is that okay, City Attorney?
Yeah.
That's fine.
All right, that's the amendment, is there a second?
All right.
Second by Commissioner Saifal. Discussion on the amendment. Hearing, then call a roll, please, City Clerk.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Saifal?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now, and the motion is amended. City Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Saifal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Uh, is there an engineer to build the Gandhi yet, we have that, going that direction yet?
Not yet, Mayor, but I'm gonna have, um, Holly work on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, what else? Thank you, Vice Mayor, very good. All right, now, we are now on, uh, I forgot.
Item, item fourteen.
Fourteen, Mr. Mayor.
Fourteen, that's right.
The man, the man, thank you, Mayor, and may read, I, I- Second reading ordinance. Thank you, Mayor and Commission, item fourteen is a second reading, it's a motion to pass, proposed ordinance number twenty-two-one-nineteen on second reading, it reads as follows, proposed ordinance number twenty-two-one-nineteen is an ordinance to the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida pursuant to section eight-point-zero-three of the City Pembroke Pines Charter, authorizing the sale of that certain eight-point-one-four plus-minus acre parcel of real property generally located and known as the north of, north of Johnson Street property, subject to the terms and conditions as set forth within the purchase and sale agreement, and incorporated herein as Exhibit B, authorizing the proper city officials to execute all necessary documents in order to effectuate the sale and conveyance as set forth in the purchase and sale agreement, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for an effective date, item number fourteen, thank you.
Move by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second by Commissioner Saifal? Discussion. Hearing, then call a roll, please.
And for the record, there was no public comment on, on a public hearing, none, none of the room.
Is there a public, is a public comment? Nope, close the comments, go ahead.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Saifal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And the number for the record, Mayor and Commission, is nineteen-seventy-four, is the permanent number.
Thank you. We're now on sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, if you will. Number sixteen, for the record, is a resolution, uh, a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Number twenty-two-one-R forty-four, it's a resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute a special magistrate service agreement with Eugene M. Seinfeld Esquire to provide code enforcement, special magistrate services on a rotational basis, providing for conflicts, severability, validity, and providing for an effective date.
So, move, move by Commissioner Castillo. Second? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Discussion? Hearing, then call a roll on the item sixteen.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Saifal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And the resolution number is number thirty-seven-seventy-two.
Thirty-seven-seventy-two, item seventeen, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, is a motion to adopt proposed Resolution Number twenty-two-one-R forty-five, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute a special magistrate service agreement with Alan L. Gabriel, Gabriel Esquire, to provide code enforcement, special magistrate services on a rotational basis, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for an effective date.
So, move, move by Commissioner Castillo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Saifal, discussion. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Saifal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The number is number thirty-seven-seventy-three.
Thank you, sir. And now, I'm gonna go to eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Eighteen, eighteen, for the record, is a resolution of the City Commission of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the Highway Maintenance Memorandum of Agreement between the City of Pembroke Pines and the Florida Department of Transportation, attached here to Exhibit A and incorporated herein, providing for mobility improvements on Dykes Road, Northwest one-ninety-sixth Avenue, and Northwest Tenth Street at Northwest one-twenty-ninth Avenue, directing the City Clerk to transmit a copy of this resolution to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, that's the NPO, and to the FDOT, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for conflicts and providing for severability, and finally, finally, providing for an effective date.
So, move, move by Commissioner Saifal, second by Commissioner Castillo, discussion.
Yes.
Right, Commissioner Castillo.
So, I just wanna clarify, I, I asked the question, I wanna make sure that it's clear, are the wa, are the roads gonna be widened in order to accommodate these, uh, these improvements, or, uh, is this gonna further narrow those roads?
City Manager.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy is here, he can address it, but, to answer quickly, the roads will be widened to provide for bike lanes.
That's the answer I'm looking for.
That's the answer I'm looking for.
Okay. Further questions? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The number is number 3774, Mayor and Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner, I mean, item 19?
19, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number 19 is a motion to approve proposed resolution number 2021-R47, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the utility work agreement between the city and the Florida Department of Transportation, attached here to exhibit A and incorporated herein, providing for utility work on Dykes Road at Northwest 196th Avenue and Northwest 10th Street at Northwest 129th Avenue, directing the city clerk to transmit a copy of the resolution to the FDOT, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take any and all necessary action to effectuate the intent of the resolution, providing for conflict severability, and finally, providing for an effective date.
Move by Commissioner Seifel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castillo. Discussion. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The number is number 3775, Mayor and Commissioner, thank you.
League, we had a League of Cities meeting up in Monopoly. Manapal...
Manalapan.
Manalapan. And then tomorrow, the League is having a luncheon meeting, board meeting, at the Greek restaurant in Hollywood.
In Hollywood.
Okay, Manager.
Yes, Mayor. As a result of two community meetings that we've had in the last couple of weeks, I appointed a school traffic committee to look at those areas that were discussed by the residents. What we placed before you this evening as a draft that we're working on is a school traffic mitigation plan, and again, it only speaks to those areas that we discussed. I would like Mr. Stam, who's I appointed as the chair of this group, and we also have on the committee Christina, the Police Department, and our city engineer, who have all addressed each one of these issues from their own perspective, since we were looking at schools adjacent to parks and traffic concerns, as well as what the engineering recommendations could be. So, Mike, if you can give us a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Mike Stam, planning and economic development director. As Mr. Dodge said, he has appointed a committee, so the Thursday after our first town hall meeting, we met with the manager and staff from PD, staff from parks, city engineer, and we started going through the various items related to traffic mitigation, specifically at the schools in western Pembroke Pines from 178 beyond. What you have before you today is a draft of a report to discuss a couple of items. We tried to use a similar format as we're evaluating each one of the schools, and we've tried to identify both short, medium, and long-range goals. Short goals, short-term goals are goals where it's more about communication, trying to get people back on buses, bus safety. The members of the commission remember during the hearing, excuse me, the town hall, one of the residents spoke up and said, many people didn't even know buses were offered. They didn't know about the safety measures being included with busing, so there's some short-term goals in there around busing. Both... I'm sorry, okay. And also around the short-term goals. If you look further in the plan, you'll see that we've done some information for every school. If you go to the Silver Trail portion, you'll see a draft letter that was sent by Assistant Chief Ramirez to the principal, which was distributed to the parents. That simple letter had a positive effect on the traffic. As soon as the parents were noticed, hey, this is what you're going to be cited based on, it had an effect. We are following up right now. That'll be one of our next steps, is to draft a similar letter for each one of our schools in this area to follow along those same lines. As the commission's already done a couple of times, if you look through the plan in the short-term and the median-term goals, we identify possible signage that needs to be included, maybe signalization improvements that we can request from Broward County traffic. We anticipate putting together some resolutions before the commission with some specific recommendations that we can send over to Broward County Traffic to evaluate. I've already been, have had the pleasure of meeting with two of the principals in the district. I'm working to schedule meetings with the rest of the principals to get their feedback. If you're looking at some of the short-term goals, Somerset, for example, we met with them last week, they know, and they are in the process of updating their traffic operation plan. Obviously, when that plan was created, I don't think any of us would have contemplated the idea of COVID, and, you know, they had been working towards and achieving positive success in the busing realm, around 40%. Obviously, COVID has changed that. It's affected all of our buses, not just Somerset, but in that particular case, we have a development order, and we're asking them to evaluate their traffic operation plan. That email, by the way, went out even before this committee was started. It was requested by me, and they're evaluating it. I'm going to continue to meet with the principals and get feedback from them on how we can help them and how we can work together, be part of the partnership. And, you know, if you read through the report, it's important, and one of the things that everybody in the committee kind of agreed to is much of this right now is behavioral, and we need to change the behavior around how parents drop their kids off. You know, Sergeant Martin's over there, she's out on there. I think she's part of the 92 citations that were issued. You can see that in your report, 90, 184th, but that's behavioral. They're breaking the law. Part of that is education. How do parents... What are they not supposed to do? What are they supposed to do? I think our police department is doing a fantastic job. They need our support to help them educate the parents and help the principals educate the parents. Some other items, we'll be submitting a public records request to the Broward County Schools so that we can map where kids are coming from. One of the ideas is that if we look to see where students are coming from, then maybe we can look at possible addition in the bus realm as we come out of COVID. I mean, I firmly believe that we're going to be coming out of COVID at some point in time, and kids are going to get back on buses, and I hope that, as we more, if more of us get vaccinated and we come out of this, but we have to look to see where those regional buses could come from. We've already started to map the data from Pines Charter West. I hope to have that done very shortly. But if you look at the ZIP codes, and this came up during the town hall, it was mentioned during the town hall that a parent, a child from Sunrise goes to Somerset Academy. That's probably a good 15 to 18-mile commute. So we're going to map this data to see, again, not individual kids, just look at the ZIP codes to see how far the children are traveling, to see if there's any way we can look for more regional, whether it's outside, you know, six-mile range, or maybe inside the six-mile range transportation options. And last but not least, the committee understands that there are long-term plans out there. We know that Pembroke Road is part of the Surtax Project. We know that we're already working with that. In fact, when I met with Principal Castellanos, one of the people that were looking to do some of that work had scheduled a meeting with them to discuss how Pembroke Road improvements will impact that school. And we know those things are coming. Those are all listed into the long-term plans. We also identify, as Carl Kennedy pointed out, possible improvements to 208, to Johnson, where we can add capacity, add stacking, and those are all listed in the long-term plans. I told the manager I would be brief. If you have any questions for me from this report, I'd be happy to answer them, and I appreciate your time.
Questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much. There's something going on with the mic.
Yeah, mine's not working.
Mic, people? Mine's on.
Mine's working. I haven't seen that.
Okay, Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me? Okay, I'll speak up. Couple of comments about this plan, which I just got today, so I really haven't had much of a chance to go through it, but, okay. First thing is that I'd like you...
Basically, the requirement of the state on transportation, they go by the physical address of the child.
Okay. So, maybe that would work.
So the... We were looking to gather ZIP code information to see how far children were traveling to school. We have school of choice, we can go a bunch of a distance, so we were instructed to submit it as a public records request to process that information. Commissioner Castillo, real quick, if I may. Obviously, we were given the assignment the Thursday after the town hall. If you look at the bullet points that are inside here, it reflects the comments that we heard at the town hall, the comments that we received via email, and then also the evaluation from our professional... I've been working with Sergeant Dalton.
My mic is working.
Is yours?
Go ahead, Commissioner Seifel.
My mic is working.
You want my mic? Here, why don't you come and take my mic?
They keep flashing off. It doesn't matter which one it is.
Mine's working.
Mine was working or not.
Yeah.
George, can you check the mics over here? All right.
It's all the way down.
No, his is working.
No, it's off.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is.
Oh.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Iris? Iris, please.
Really, it's very simple. All I really wanted to say was that I was at the Charter Elementary Middle School advisory meeting the other evening, and there was some discussion about, parents were asking about busing, and their concerns were about the safety of the bus and cleanliness of the bus, and that was their concern. And our transportation gentleman, Mr. Pacero, Mr. Pacero was there, and he did get up and speak and did tell the parents that were there about the process of how the buses are cleaned in the morning, they're cleaned after the last run at night so that they're ready then for the morning run, and so the parents were very happy to hear. That that was happening, and so I'm hoping that perhaps maybe, Mr. Stam, that might be something that we might be able to spread out a little bit more to all of our folks as to, you know, to reassure them on the cleanliness of the buses, because that was a big concern. The other question that was asked was that all buses, each seat has a working seatbelt. And again, I think that that's just general information that should be out, but clearly the cleaning of it was an important issue. Thank you.
Okay. We should have it in track. Okay, City Attorney?
No report this evening, there, thank you.
Great. Everybody, thank you for your patience. Have a great night.
All right. See you later.
All right.
Good night.
I actually have new business. Do you see much going on in the office?
It's like, there's occasionally, yeah.
I think I'm going to, I think it's triggering my FBLF.
Well, we have it programmed that way.